Alrighty, it's 5:15 and I'd like to call the March 27th, 2025 work session of the Stanton City Council to order. I will begin by saying on March 17th, I received a request from Councillor Overholzer to participate remotely in the March 27th, 2025 city council meeting due to a personal matter that prevents his physical attendance at the meeting. Pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, I will now ask Councillor Overholzer to state the personal matter that makes him unable to attend tonight's meeting. Good evening.
Good evening. I am on vacation.
That is a personal matter. I will now entertain a motion to allow Councillor Overholzer's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three.
I will say pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum memorandum number three, I am moved to allow Councillor Overholzer to remotely participate in the March 27th, 2025 Stanton City Council meeting due to a personal matter.
Mr. Overholzer, can you please state your location?
Yes, I am in Kniveshead, North Carolina.
Okay. Can everyone on city council and in the audience hear Councillor Overholzer? I just want to make-
We need a second and a vote.
Yeah, yes. May I get a motion, please?
Well, I second the-
I apologize. A second. Any further discussion from councillors? Alright, Mr. Kasker, we call the roll.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arrowood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. I will now entertain a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting agendas.
Mayor Edwards, I move to approve the work session, regular meeting agendas as presented.
Mayor Arrowood, is there a second? A second? And is there any further discussion? Mr. Kasker, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arrowood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. This takes us to item two, an update on Friends of the Library Terrace Project. Ms. Boerger.
Amanda Kaufman, Assistant City Manager, will introduce this item this evening. Yeah, so our first item is an update on a very exciting project, and that is the Library Terrace Project. We have Kenan Bowen here. She's a member of the Friends Terrace Committee, and she will be providing the presentation, and with her is Library Director Sarah Scrobess.
Good evening, Mrs. Bowen. Good evening, Mrs. Scrobess. Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for giving us this time to show you the progress that we've made. It has taken some time. So we do have some slides to- okay, here we go. So this is the committee, and some of the people here, Howard, Katord, myself. The two of us are the ones represented on that list, part of the committee, and then we have Patty, who's president right now of the Friends, who is our president next year, actually. I'm going to give you a little information, just because some of the people are new and they didn't hear the discussion that we had before. So one of the re- oh, yeah. Next slide.
I'm trying.
Well-
Where am I pointing at?
I'll go ahead. One of the reasons that we decided to do the project is that, well, I'll wait till the picture comes up.
And since we're taking a moment to get ready, I just want everyone who's participating via Zoom that we are having a little difficulty with our Zoom platform, and so you may have some difficulty hearing. So if, make sure you're right up to the microphone. Thank you, Kenan.
I guess it started during COVID. The, if you face a library and off to the right, that area of the land was used for some storytimes, but it's very rocky and bumpy, uneven. It was hard for moms with strollers. It's not accessible. So when we received a wonderful gift from the estate of Julia Kiesling, we decided that this would be a project worthwhile for the library's Friends group to take on. So if you look at the slide, you can see the library is on the left, and then the rest of it shows you the project. And we have made a few changes since we showed you this picture before. The biggest change is on the meandering pathway that you can see. And the reason we did that is that, well, I'll go on and say that Ray Burkholder of Balzer and Associates is helping us. And so he's the one that did this little map, this little map. And he said that by doing the meandering pathway and making the elevation increase at a slower rate, that we would not need to put the railings up that we had planned, and saved a lot of money with that. So that was a really good- and we'll landscape that and make it look quite nice. So if someone is handicapped or has strollers, they can go up. There'll be little places for them to rest along the way. Then I thought I would mention Ray, who's helping. Amanda Kaufman helped us in the very beginning, kind of getting us on the right path with the city government. We've talked to a lot of the maintenance staff and other people, and Matthew Sensabaugh, also keeping him in the loop. And Joseph Williams of Williams Brothers did help us with taking down some of the trees. So, let's move to the next slide. And this can give you a little bit more- actually, go back, I'm sorry, one more time. Oh dear.
We're having some difficulty.
You can't go back?
Yeah.
Oh. Okay. Opposite that meandering pathway was an area of where the cherry trees were. And we had just thought about landscaping it, but talking to Sarah some more, we decided to make that a patio. So it's going to be set up with pavers, and there'll be two picnic tables there. So it'll kind of be a nice entranceway to that part of the library, I think, accessible to the parking lot, handicap parking, a lot of things that go on there, people that get books delivered to the car. All of that will just look nicer. Alright, next slide. That one. So here you have the actual terrace patio. So you come up the seats or the steps, or you go up the meandering pathway, and you'll be on the patio. So it's going to be raised up a bit and leveled off. And it'll have walls going around it that will provide more seating. And then there'll be just two picnic tables up there. Those two circles will be to the left and to the right in those little areas set off for them. And there'll be two sets of seats that are more in the terrace area. And then beyond that, of course, if you have more people, they can sit on the grass because the back goes, it elevates up. And there's a picture there that's of Stewart Hall's seating, their amphitheater. So we took a couple pictures looking for ideas. And then just the other examples are things that we thought about. And we have picked out pavers and stones that we think look natural and will match some of the stones at the library, too. Okay. Let's see. So we had three goals, and one, the first goal was the making this project accessible to everyone. What I didn't mention about the other seating area of the terrace, there's going to be recessed lighting set into the stones, and then also lighting along the pathway. And it'll all be kind of downward lighting. And it will be electricity and for sound systems. And then on the library building itself, there are two old lights up in the top corners on the left and right. So we're going to replace those with better lights. These are all low voltage. They don't take very much electricity. We can use what is already out there for the sensory garden. And, you know, the lights will all be going down. So keeping that secure for the librarian to be able to look out the window, but also keeping it low light for neighbors, too, trying to keep them in mind. Alright. And then this is our second goal, was that we wanted the area to be protected from the sun, which is getting hotter, spring, summer, fall. And because we wanted it to be permanent, we decided it had, well, we were- I'll go back a little bit and say, we've been working with Ryan Gunling of Riesling Technical Enterprise in town. He does this type of fabric structure, but he wasn't able to help us this time, so he advised us. And he, we looked at different companies, but the one we selected is in Portland, Oregon, and it's called Guildworks. We've been working with a man named Mar Ricketts, who's an architect with an artistic mind. He does lots of these projects around the country, actually. So we've been working with him, and when we said we wanted it to be permanent and year-round, we knew it had to withstand the snow, especially this winter with the snow we had, and then the rain and the runoff of the water and wind, all of those factors. So you have to have all of a really strong foundation and support for a sale. This is a big sale. It's the height at the end of it is going to be, I think, about 20 feet. And you can see the people underneath it, so it gives us a lot of shade. The reason it's taken us so long, this project has gone on for a while, is that we had to come to an agreement with him and to satisfy what we wanted. And we wanted it to be big enough to give shade, especially for those on the patio and then those on the seats. There'll still be some areas left if someone wants to sit in the sun, obviously, but overall, it gives us a lot of shade. I think it's going to look pretty dramatic. So because of that, Ray Burkholder has been working with Katie Goodman, I think is her name, she's an engineer with them. And they came to the conclusion they needed real, and Mar also said this, that you need really strong foundations to hold the poles that are holding the sails. So they reached out to a company in Sanston, Virginia, which is near Richmond, and it's called Technical Foundations. And they are super experts on really good, strong foundations, and they are willing to help us, and they will actually be putting in the foundations. And I think they're- we're doing some surveying soon, and then they're going to come up and do some testing to find out just what, what is under all that grass, you know, how much rock and what else is left there. So that's great. And then we're also using a local company, I think it's the Moffett Company, that the city does some work with, and they're going to do the concrete for us, and maybe the steel poles. Of course, the price of steel's been fluctuating because of the tariffs, so we haven't been able to get an exact price on that yet. But we hope to do it with them, keep it local as much as possible. We really want this area to be, it's fine, to be really park-like, because even now you get people up there picnicking or somebody sitting there with their computer. So I think it's going to be used by the library for lots of events, but by just anybody who's in the area and wants a place to sit outside, which of course is really important. And then also, we hope that there might be some entertainment, just like maybe hyphens or even the music that comes to the library. So we want it to look really nice. We needed then someone to do the landscaping and the hardscape. So we talked to a lot of, well, four different landscape people, and chose Valley Landscaping with Caleb Harlow, who's going to help us. And he will do, you know, moving the dirt around, getting rid of the tree stumps. And then he'll do all the stonework and the sidewalks, which will be pavement, there'll be concrete, and then the seats and everything. All of that preliminary work will be done, plus the foundations, the poles, and then the sail will be installed. And then after all that's done, because a lot of heavy machinery will have to be in there, then they'll come in and put the grass, and we want to put some ground cover, maybe some small trees in the meandering area, and replace some of the trees that we took out. So that, that's that goal for working with Caleb, and then Matthew Sensabaugh will give us lots of ideas about what's really usable there. There was something else I thought of. Okay. Oh, I know. Well, accessibility, I talked about that. That was the goal, accessibility, having it permanent and having protection. And then we are going to reach out. We've reached out to neighbors just in the library, but we will, before construction starts, we'll get out to them again, let them know. But I think the overall reaction to what we've done so far has been really positive, so that's been good. Okay. We completed the memorandum of agreement with the city, and the reason for that is at the end of the project, the Friends will turn it over to the city. It becomes the city's property, and then they will maintain it and, you know, be part of the library there, too. So that's all been done. The permits are in progress. I talked to Ray today, and that's going along. He doesn't think we'll have any problems with that. And we're hoping to do a groundbreaking sometime in April, fingers crossed. And then Sarah says we have access to some gold shovels and helmets, so try to make it fun. And then when it's all finished, have a ribbon cutting, so lots of excitement.
We have big scissors, too.
Big scissors.
We have giant scissors.
Oh, okay.
We'll donate those to the cause.
So I don't have anything else. You?
You want? Sure. Okay.
It has just been incredible to see the effort and time that the Friends have invested in this over the past probably 18 months at this point. Yeah, it started with Kenan saying, will you come over to Stewart Hall with me and look at this? And she, I want to thank her in particular, because she has put so much time into talking to companies, working with the Friends. This has really been a labor of love for her, I think. And I think it's really going to be a beautiful showpiece for the library and the community in general, too. And I hope you are as excited about it as we are.
Yeah.
And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
Well, I don't have a question. I just have a statement. This is such an awesome project, and I'm excited to see that it's finished, and it gives you a better opportunity to be outdoors instead of inside, where, you know, the air conditioner is in the summer that just don't make for good out, you know, good to be indoors, but outdoors is so much better, and this is just awesome. So I just want to thank all the Friends of the fam- Friends of the Library. I'm saying Friends of the Family. The Friends of the Library for, you know, taking this on and doing this and making it better for our city, so thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. I do have a question about the sale. What color is it?
They have suggested lighter colors, like white, just because of- Yeah, so rather than doing something like green or blue, they advised us not to do that, because the way it casts light then on people underneath it makes them look discolored.
And is there a projected life of that?
It depends on what level of fabric they buy.
Well, we're getting really very strong. I mean, it's many-layered. It's not just one piece of fabric. So Ryan Gunling has told me that it could be 10, 15 years.
Oh, great.
And that actually, he has agreed to help us, and we're going to do some kind of a license or agreement with him once it's finished, that he'll be kind of keeping an eye on it and maintain it if we have problems. And he can work with the person who's installing it, too, who won, who's knows Ryan personally. So I think between the two of them.
And can I just say, I just, the Friends specifically chose something this structurally sound, so that the city would not have to dedicate employees to put up the sale and take it down every year. The Friends really wanted to make it as low maintenance as possible for the city. And that's why the design took so long, because it just means fine-tuning it to code and making sure it could withstand all those, you know, weather conditions all year round.
Yeah, it's been a complicated, a very complicated project, and with a lot of people. But I have to say, everybody has been great, you know, that when we mention it, they, they don't hesitate. They say, oh, this is the kind of work we like to do, and so I think that's a real, says something for the area and the community.
Thank you.
Kenan, I just love how you all worked with local, with local people, looking for local companies, buying locally, and having that in mind. And, you know, our community is so, so welcoming, and I'm sure so grateful for everything you're doing. It has been a while, but it's going to be worth it. And thank you so much for all of the work that you're doing, Dan back there, and Howard and Patty, and you, Kenan, and of course, Sarah, all of you. It is a labor of love, and it's a beautiful honor, a little legacy for, for the woman who left this as a bequest.
I think so, too. I mean, I think if she could see what her gift did for the city, she'd be really pleased.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Well, we will send out invitations for the groundbreaking and ribbon cutting when the time comes.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming, and thank all of you for being here. Thanks for the time. Alright. Moving on to item three, an update on the refuse modernization initiative. Ms. Boerger.
Am I just introducing Dave? Okay, sorry. We're talking over here how to coordinate this.
Okay.
Mr. Dave Irvin is here, Public Works Director, and he's going to provide an update on where we are with the modernization and kind of what's going to happen soon after this, I guess, after it rolls out to the residents. So I'm gonna go ahead and let him provide an update.
Mayor Edwards, Vice Mayor Arrowood, and Council. Just like the Friends of the Library and Sarah have been working on a long-term project, we have as well. And we have some physical displays here. So I would, I'm going to take a little bit of time just to talk about where we are with this program.
Thank you.
Try this. Oh, too far. There we go. Alright, as, when we first started this program, there were many goals that we had in mind that we wanted to achieve. Five of those goals are shown right here. I'm just going to touch on each one of them just briefly. One of the goals, upper left, is the improved employee safety. That's hard to quantify, but subjectively, I think it is working. It is working very well. The increased operations efficiency, that is a measurable goal with our software. We have the Rubicon software that tracks everything. We've been using that prior to the actual rollout of the new cans. We've been using it just looking at the routes, and it collects a lot of data. So as we go forward, we'll be looking at the data and the metrics associated with that, and it will give us the opportunity to adjust routes, adjust directions of which one, which way do you go up the street, which one's going to work better? Equity between the amount of cans on each of the, on each of the trucks. The keep streets and stormwater systems clean, that sort of ties in with the one on the lower left, the improved curb appeal. I can probably best illustrate this with real world, real world experience. About a month ago, on trash day, I was driving down Grubert Street. It was a windy day. This is prior to all the trash can rollout. A can was there that did not have a lid, and it had blown over, and all of a sudden, we went from being trash collectors to litter collectors, to the extent that we had to send out staff to clean up the litter. And when that happens, it does get into the storm systems, it's a nuisance, et cetera. Well, I'm happy to say that this past Friday, I did the same thing, drive down Grubert, and a remarkable difference. No loose bags or strange boxes or whatever. It was can, 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 all the way down. So I believe we are achieving some success with that. Lower right, the control and reduce waste going to the landfill. This also will be a measurable goal over time. So we're going to be taking our Rubicon data and those metrics and comparing them to our monthly landfill reports that we get to see if we're actually making an impact. Now, when we do this, as you all know, the city is growing, so any reduction in what's going to the landfill may be masked or covered by the increase of our new homes coming in. So we may have to do some sort of data normalizing or something like that to, to evaluate that. So we've been delivery status. Alright, so the residential can rollout began on March 6th. We were hoping for a two-week rollout. There were a few logistical issues at the beginning, and so here we are, three weeks from the start of it. We do anticipate that all the residential trash cans will, the delivery of those will be completed by the end of this week. As of this morning, 8,700 cans had been delivered. We had about 700 to go. If you do the math on the 8,700 cans minus, like, the first day, we're averaging like 620 cans deployed each day. And it also depends on the number of crews that the contractor sends up for us to do that work, or for them to do that work. Immediately following the rollout, you'll see the next bullet item. It is a reconciliation stage. Delivering 95, 90, just under 10,000 cans. A few things are going to go wrong, and they did. So by contract with our contractor, he is responsible for reconciling some of those minor hiccups along the way, such as delivered wrong size can to the wrong address, or this canned serial number does not match up with the account number, things like that. So he will be, starting next week, going back, initiating the reconciliation stage of this phase. And it's still not over in the sense that we had expected some folks to call and switch sizes, and they have. And it's, some are saying after they've had their can and they're starting to use it, no, this is not going to work for me. I have a small can. I need a bigger one, or vice versa. Well, that's not a part of the contractor's duties. That's what Public Works will be doing. So that is also a part of the reconciliation phase, making our customers happy, trying to get them the size can that really works for them. So where are we with the actual program? The trash must be bagged in the city bin with the lid closed. I have another photo coming up on another slide where I'll elaborate on that a little bit. The bag tag for any extra trash that they may have, we've offered this bag tag option. It must, it has to be attached to each additional bag, and we do have a sample of what that looks like. That's a bag tag. It's with trash. There's no real trash. Well, actually, there is real trash in there, but it's paper. It's paper. And those bag tags can be purchased for, you know, $1 each at City Hall, Public Works, or online.
Mr. Irvin, we did receive some free, was it five?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And that was interesting in itself. Go.
Yeah.
Go.
Yeah.
Okay. There we go. Yes, there were five, and interesting things happened. I mean, some people said, oh, I didn't get mine. Okay, well, honor system kicks in, you know, but, and it was just to get them used to it. We did have one interesting question where they said, do I have to bag or tag my bags that go in the can? No. You do not. Those are for the extra, extra ones. So we have had a number of questions throughout this whole program. This is like the, the top star questions, the most, the most common of- This is like the, the top star questions, most, the most common of the frequently asked questions. How do I get rid of my old bin? And we emphasize, we have to emphasize clearly market, clearly market. Real world example is our guys are rolling through, they see a trash can, it's got a post-it note or something. It, it's marked. The guys pick it up, they put it in the back of the loader, it goes to the landfill as they're dumping, they see the note and they had misread it. The note that was attached said, please do not throw my can away. Luckily, they were able to achieve it or retrieve it and get it back to the customer. But those are just examples of some of the things that, that happen. Next time, what happens if the policy isn't followed? We have worked diligently on a non-compliance protocol that will be administered through or communicated through hang tag notifications. It's going to loosely, well, not loosely, it will follow a three-step process so that, you know, first violation of whatever it is, hang a tag and we will still take your trash. Second violation, basically same thing. But by the time we get down to the third violation, we're going to hang a tag, but we're not going to take the trash. And at that point, the homeowner or, or customer has some options that he'll have to consider. Yes, ma'am.
So is this when they are not using their trash bins that we are, and they're still using their own?
There's a number of violations. So we've been monitoring this through this rollout period. The most common violation that's occurring right now is not bagging the trash that goes in the bin. So the whole scenario that is described out on Grubert Street, well, these cans get over to the back of the truck. They are tipped. There's a three-foot, there's a two to three foot air gap there and there's still a chance that this stuff can blow around and we turn trash to litter. Not a good situation. That's the whole concept behind why these, we, we need the bags in, in the cans. So that's the most common violation that we're seeing right now that we'll have to communicate out to the people. And it's an easily resolvable one. I mean, I would think so. How do I change my bin size or add a second bin? Well, certainly that has been happening. We've been getting lots of requests and it's just call Public Works. And the second bin, currently it is a, will add a twelve dollar per month fee for the second bins. Is there assistance for people with disabilities or who need extra help? Absolutely. We have considered that. And there, it's an application process. It's part of the, the policy. It's published online. And if they call, we can supply them with paper copies. And this is designed for the elderly or disabled. We understand that that's a segment of our, an important segment of our population. So they submit the application. We have a trash committee that reviews those and approves or denies or asks for more information or personal meeting. And, and we go to that. So to date, we have twenty odd, maybe applications, twenty so, of which some have been approved and some have been denied. So the process is, is working fairly well right now.
Mr. Irvin, is that, is that on the Public Works site?
Yes, sir. I went to look for it. It's with, it's on the policy. Okay. There's the solid waste policy and it's explained and the forms themselves are in the solid waste policy. So it's a little difficult to find right now. I had some difficulty finding it.
Public Works policy.
Well, it's a little more nested than that. So that's something that we'll probably have to look into as far as making it more accessible, easily accessible.
One other quick policy question. And I don't know, maybe you're going to get to this, but I know that when they, when they roll these cans out in other communities, if the lid is not shut.
Correct.
If it's overfilled and not shut, that there is a penalty or a fine. Is that?
All right. So I'll, I'll clarify one thing. There's no penalties or fines with this program. Okay. There, there are violations that we hope to, to resolve through the notification process. But I'll illustrate this with a real world, well, fair way. We're not going to quibble over a couple inches. I don't think, you know, it's a judgment call by our guys. But this situation is not good. And mostly from the standpoint is, if, if they have the loose trash in there, it can blow around. But more importantly, rain, snow, whatever else, animals can get in. The rain and snow would add extra weight. Not a good idea. Same policy that Harrisonburg follows. Lid, lid has to be closed. Does that help? Yeah. Okay. Exciting news here. Residential yard waste. You'll see a new can on display. First delivery of the yard waste cans came in today. So we have a whole truckload up there. Ready to start deployment, but again, residential first, then yard waste. And the interest is rising. I guess the folks are getting the word. Yesterday, or no, it was this morning, we started off with like two hundred and fourteen and interest. And just throughout the day, we had six or seven more. So folks are signing up for this program. How to sign up? It's always been the same way. Call us. Just call us. You can sign up on the city website as well. The fifty-dollar refundable deposit, that will be attached to their first bill for the people who do opt in. And that, that first, it won't be taken out until after we actually deliver the cans. So yeah, you have to opt in. It's a free service. And right now we're looking at monthly pickup for that.
Mr. Irvin, that's monthly throughout the year?
I'm sorry.
Monthly throughout the, throughout the year?
Yes, ma'am.
Wow, thank you.
Well, I, I, you have to believe that like in January and February, other than maybe some sticks and twigs, it,
You might not get a lot of them.
It might not be a lot. And then it might be peak of the season, say, you know, June and, and September or something like that.
Would it be a predetermined date or schedule?
Right now, it's first Wednesday of every month.
Okay.
And we're expecting to start that in June. And I lost, okay, here we go. A little. Okay. So in addition to this, we are in the midst of heavy trash. And as you know, another update to this whole program was to do this twice a year. We advertised for two weeks for this year. I mean, yeah, two weeks this spring and two weeks in the fall. And so this is, we're in the two weeks. It's going remarkably well. That may be because we're seeing a little bit less trash, bulk trash that we've seen in, in years past. Not a lot, but a little. And it counts. So that is underway. And then tire disposal down at Gypsy Hill Park will be Saturday, a week, a week from the Saturday. And then that'll be followed by the, the brush pickup, as you see in the, in the photo there. And with that, if you have any questions.
Mr. Irvin, what is the timeframe that the cans should all be in, all be in utilized instead of having your own cans? Do you have a timeframe for that?
Well, we need to get them all delivered first. So we anticipate that happens at the end of this week. Then as far as when we actually start enforcing the violations, it's really not fair to enforce anything hard and fast, you know, like next week with the folks that just got their cans. We want them to get used to the can first. So there's not a hard and fast date at this point.
I'll come back.
Are all the trucks retrofit with the, retrofitted with the arm?
Yes.
All done?
All done.
Right. What if my can breaks? Whether the wheel falls off, top rips off?
Call you. That's a great question. Yeah, absolutely. Well, me?
Sure.
Sure.
Feel free to call me.
Thanks. Yes, do, do call us. So this city, we own the cans, right? So we are responsible for the normal wear and tell, wear and tear. The wheel falls off. Okay, call us. You know, we might just reattach it or we hole develops in the can. Those are, that's wear and tear and we are responsible for that. It gets a little funny when there's damage to the can that is a little harder to prove. Like for instance, and it says on the top of the can, no hot ashes. Well, if we roll up to the site and there's hot ashes in the can, A, we're going to know it. B, we're going to know that we didn't put it there and we didn't make that damage. So that's when we have to get back to the property owner, the customer, and let them know that they are responsible for the can. Again, this is the same way it's done in City of Harrisonburg.
So regular wear and tear, something breaks, call Public Works, it's replaced, it doesn't cost anything.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Irvin?
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you so much. It was a great, great update. I love my new trash can. I think they all look great.
We have gotten many compliments or, or thank you for doing this. Thank you for doing this. So in the public works world, the complaint to compliment ratio is usually ten to one. But with the trash cans, it's almost the reverse. So that's, that's good news.
Yeah. Congratulations. That's terrific. And thanks to all the staff. I, I know communicating this and putting the policies together. It's been a lot of work, but it's really paying off. So glad to see that. Terrific. Well, thank you. This is all good news. We're going to move on to item four. And this is a discussion of the Adopt a Street program. Ms. Beauregard?
This was added at the request of Councilmember Overholzer. And I think I'll turn it over to him for a minute to discuss this briefly. And then staff can answer any questions or provide more information. So go ahead, Mr. Overholzer.
All right. Hoping there's not terrible feedback there in the hall. I'll try to mute as soon as I'm done. But the Adopt a Street is, is a really powerful tool that's implemented in a lot of communities, including VDOT in this area on county roads. It helps beautify the community by creating a partnership between government and local volunteers who agree to pick up trash on a regular basis in a specified area of the city. It's very similar to the Adopt a Stream program, which is implemented, is running currently in the city and for which the city provides similar support. That is picking up the trash collected by volunteers and coordinating with, with those volunteers. The difference is that apparently, although it's documented on the, the city website, that's how I learned about it. Met with Willow Hughes and, and Rodney Rhodes and was excited by seeing this program with, with an indication that no one is participating yet and that the city needed to promote it. I offered to promote it. But in the course of that, our city manager said, hold on, I'd like to run this by city council and, you know, officially get support and, and see what kinds of resources we need to, to, to fully implement it. But I'll, I'll just say before turning it back over to, to Leslie, that in the course of some of the discussions, and particularly with the Lewis Creek Watershed Advisory Committee, they're very enthusiastic about this program and see that it meshes nicely with the, the creek, with the, with the stream adoption program. Both programs are really all about protecting the watershed. The trash down the street ends up in our waterways. So by having both of these programs, we protect the watershed, we beautify our city. We leverage the resources of, of volunteers. It's an efficient way to, to provide the service. And we just need to, we just need to be sure that we do it in an efficient way. And some of the advantages beyond the ones that I've already described, that the city gets credit from the state in conforming with the requirements under the municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4 for short. So by having, by, by having a program like this, the city also gets credit toward meeting these state requirements, so stormwater requirements. So there's an advantage there. Anything to add? I'll, I'll, I'll stop at this point.
Do you want questions first or did you want to staff?
I, I can provide an update when I talk to staff. So yeah, so Mr. Overholzer brought to my attention that he was interested in this and I wanted to learn more about it too. Cause I learned it has been a very passive program for, we're not sure how long. But if there is interest in making it an active program that we would actually, you know, put out there. And I know, I believe there's already groups that are interested in participating. Then I thought, I thought, well, we need to figure out a way to resource this. It will take some resources and staff time. So I spoke to both Mr. Irvin and Ms. Hughes. And it appears, and if they, if I'm wrong, they can run up to, to incorrect me, that Mr. Irvin has staff that would be able to help manage this on the public works end, which would be picking up bags of trash and coordinating that end of it. Ms. Hughes and her office would then manage the program and kind of administer the program. So and right now the form says Public Works, that would say Environmental Division instead. So together they could work on this program. Mr. Irvin said they have the materials on hand. I'm sure we'd have to replace materials, but I think the budget for that is fairly limited. The biggest piece of this would, if you want it, you know, the signs that you see, the adopt a street signs that are kind of more permanent. Mr. Irvin said those are five hundred dollars each. So you would have a thousand dollar expense if you were going to cover, you know, both sides of an area of street that has been adopted. So that's the expense we'd want to make sure we put aside as a resource and kind of have that on hand. So minimal resources, but as, since we're about to go into the budget process, I, I think we would, if you all decide this evening, you would like us to pursue a way to do this, then we would come back to you, I think, with some kind of plan on how to resource it as part of the budget. So.
I just wonder, thank you for, it looks like a lot of progress has been made on this. And I just, I can see Fred Blanton just going two thumbs up and Willow's there supporting it. I, I, I wonder if it wouldn't have to be a five hundred dollar sign for adopting a specific street, if it could be similar to the West End trash pickup day where it's just people get together and go out to a, a particular area and pick up trash that day, rather than having a, a group of people adopt a specific street, rather of the administrator, the person in charge of the crew that day says, hey, this area is really, we haven't gotten there yet. Let's, let's head over there, meet at 10 o'clock so that it wouldn't have that piece of adopting, of having to make signs.
Well, you don't have to make signs. I mean, but I think what this program would give us is more of an organized, something that's more organized that happens at least quarterly, I think. They would, they would have to commit quarterly to picking up their section. So it's, it's, it's a more organized approach to clean up. We don't have to do signs. That's, I mean, I don't think we do. It's not necessary as long as we know kind of which streets are being cleaned and which groups are doing it. And that would be Willow's job. And then Dave would have his staff member kind of help coordinate that. I think we could handle it. So we don't need to have that expense. That's certainly not a necessity.
Well, the sign part has been, in other communities, it's been kind of a semi-free advertising for a business that wants to do it, that shows community involvement, I suppose.
So how about, they seem nice. How about if the business wanted to put their sign up? I mean, they pay for the sign to put up because I know there's a lot of civic organizations that would adopt the street here in the city of Stanton. So if they wanted to utilize that and put the sign up, we would not stop them from doing that, right?
I would.
We do accept donations. And I'm not sure that would work with every group. I'm not sure we would ask like the Boy Scouts, for instance, to give us a thousand dollars for a sign. But if somebody wanted to donate to put up a sign, then, or the Adopt a Street. But I would want to be consistent with it. If we were going to do it for one, then I would certainly want to make sure we have a budget to go ahead and have signs made if that's the direction we want to go. But it's more so important probably right now just to organize the actual program
Right.
and see what the interest is. And I think Fred's like, there's a lot of interest out there. So I think we have a lot of groups interested. So maybe that's the first step. And then we can decide. You know, do we then put the signs up or how do we?
So is this, this is just to see if we're interested in learning more.
Yeah. So if you all tell me you're interested, then it's, since we're going into the budget process, we can kind of figure out, okay, we, we, we can find a resource or we can, here's a budget for this somewhere in the budget. If that's the direction you want to go in or, or not. So, but we can come back to you with kind of a more formal plan on how we're.
One more sign question. Now, the sign shop at Public Works, are we not able to, are these? If there's anyone with Public Works here.
They don't make every single sign in the city, but I'm going to let Dave.
You know, are these have to be ordered?
And what was about the sign?
It's Mr. Irvin. And now the, the, the sunshine of Public Works were able to make some of our signs.
Yes.
Is this not the type of sign, are there specific parameters this sign has to hit that we are not able to produce?
We can produce that. We can produce that type of sign, now currently, we, we follow the MUTCD, the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and of course, that's VDOT, and their, their sign is Adopt a Highway, so, you know, a few minor revisions, but we can make that work. The, the, the level that we've investigated, the cost for the sign is exactly that, it's, it's our best guess at, at this point, because it's also the post, it's any type of a foundation. It, it's all those things, but to help reduce those costs, yes, we can make that in-house as, as many that, that are needed, but there is an overall cost, $500 gets us in the ballpark, okay.
Along those lines, I think the city Public Works has produced signs for the Lewis Creek adoption of the stream that borders the PSDB property, so the city did produce those signs internally, I believe.
Correct. That is true.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin, thank you.
I, I'm all for it.
All right, it looks like everybody's nodding and in support of this, yeah.
And I, I don't think it would be an overreach either, though, to ask, because it is advertising basically for a lot of the groups that get involved in businesses, so if there is a price structure for like nonprofits and a business, like, I don't think it would be a horrible idea to ask people to contribute the cost of the sign, so, yeah.
Yeah, and then getting an idea of how many, how many we're talking about, yeah, so thank you for, for pursuing that for us.
It's a great idea.
And thank you, Mr. Mr. Overholzer, for bringing this to our attention. Alrighty. Any more discussion on that? Terrific, alrighty, we are on time. We are moving on to item five, a discussion of establishment of a day shelter for unsheltered persons, Ms. Beauregard.
Well, Mayor Edwards, this is added at your request, so I'm gonna turn it right back over to you, if that's okay.
Yes, absolutely, and I have all this written information and a lot of numbers here, and I thought, you know what, I'll just kind of talk, but I do have this information printed for anybody who wants to read it, for, if Kylie wants to put that on his desk or hand it out. So, I am here tonight to talk to, about something that I feel very strongly about, and I think is very important in our community, and that is the creation of a low barrier day shelter in Stanton, and why do I think that we need a day shelter? There are many unhoused and unsheltered people in our community, and these individuals in cold weather have the warm shelter to go in the evening. So they have shelter from about 5:30, and I think it's 6:30 or 7:30, I can't remember when in the morning. But in the wintertime, they must leave the church that they're staying in, and, and, and then be dropped off either at the Lewis Street Hub, or, or if they are in Waynesboro, then dropped off at a location in Waynesboro. But from, between that morning hour and 5:30, when they can go back to the warm shelter, there is no structured program or anywhere for them to, to be, and to access services, to just be safe, to be warm, to be out of the elements, and I believe that that prolongs a person's situation, and this plays out in the, in the research and in statistics, again, which I have written down. If you want to, if you want to look at those things, but I, I talked to, I talked to many, many people about this, I really, probably about the last 12 months, all of the agencies that are, are currently working with the unhoused and unsheltered population, unhoused means that you are technically homeless, but you are in a shelter, or you are staying in a hotel, or you're staying with a friend. Unsheltered means you are not at the mission, you are not staying with a friend, you are staying in a, in a place, or in a tent, in your car, a place that is not meant for human habitation. And to get an idea of how many folks this might be affecting in Stanton and Waynesboro, I'll just use Stanton and Waynesboro, because those are the numbers from Warm. I spoke with the director, the executive director, the other day, and he indicated that they have served since November 25th, when, when the, the season, the warm season starts, they've served over 200 unique individuals for a total of over 1,000 stays. So again, that's since the end of November, so that is in the ballpark of 200 unsheltered people, so these are folks who have literally nowhere else to go other than warm in the evening, and then during the day, they are coming into town. Generally, folks are, some people will go to, I've been told they go to Hardee's and have coffee and sit and talk, which is terrific, folks can do what they want to do, they tend to congregate in the library or other public spaces. It is, it is fine to be doing this, it's a testament to our welcoming community and our resources that we have in Stanton, however, these are not places where they're accessing resources, they're not able to speak with a trained person to find out how to get, how to get housing, how to find treatment, if they have mental health issues, if they have addiction issues, if they have, you know, if they have medical issues. I have talked to people who simply need to start with, I need to get a birth certificate, because if I don't have a birth certificate, I can't get my license or ID, and if I don't have an ID or a license, I can't get this, and then I can't access Medicaid, and I can't, so, it really starts from the very basics. And again, this is a, on the gamut, on the gamut of housing, this is probably the hardest, the hardest population to serve, they are difficult to track. But these are folks that we see walking around town, they, you know, tend to have to carry what they have on their back, and a very, very difficult way to be, it's, it's not a, it's an inhumane way to have to live. There, there is a toll on our community, it, they had, tend to have a higher, they tend to use emergency services at the hospital more, so that is a cross to the community, they do tend to get involved with emergency services, and it, it is a it's something that needs to be addressed now, or it gets worse, and I feel, I feel as a, as a caring, compassionate prosperous community, this is something that, that we need to step up to. Why are these folks not going to the mission? There are rules for being at the mission, it's called a high barrier shelter. Some folks have been trespassed, which means they have maybe used, used drugs or alcohol there at the mission, perhaps they have been aggressive at the mission. If you ha, are, are a sex offender, you can't be at the mission, because there are families, there are children there. And some folks choose just not to be there, not to be at the mission, because they don't want to be around large numbers of people, particularly if they are dealing with any mental health issues, and, and so this is just a segment of the population that is, is difficult to reach, nonetheless critically important to reach. So, again, I have been speaking with many, many service providers, folks in churches who are already serving individuals that find themselves i- in this predicament, and I have come up with some solutions, and I'm trying to determine the role of city council, the role of our local government, and how we can help to support some solutions that may be out there. So, first, I'm gonna tell you the solutions that I'm, that I have been able to come up with in my conversations with service providers and a local church. And then I would love to have a conversation with you all in the 14 minutes that we have left, about how we might proceed as a council and as a, as a local government. So, there is a local church that is willing to house such a shelter, a day shelter. Programming has not been, you know, has not been laid out, but I've also found a service provider. If, if the community can come around Warm, Warm Shelter has agreed to be the service provider, so not only would they be doing the nighttime shelter, but they could implement a day shelter here in Stanton. The Augusta Health Mobile Clinic would be is very interested in increasing their, their presence here in Stanton, and they would have this spot as an additional mobile clinic, and other service providers would also be able to come into this, what I see as sort of like, hopefully, a sort of a one-stop shop. There are other resources, as you all perhaps are aware, Verona Community Center is, you know, if you have a car 15 minutes away, they are a terrific community center. People who are unsheltered, folks who just want to, you know, have access to computers or use the laundry, can, can, can go to the community center, and unsheltered folks do access this, this terrific resource. However, it does lack some things, transportation is an issue. Many of the, the folks that are in this situation have difficulty accessing bus passes, now many places, the library will give out, the library gives out bus passes, Sacre gives out bus passes, Trinity gives them out during noon lunch, many places give out bus passes, however, they, they go just like that, they're gone, and so to get the, the particular bus to take you up to Verona and get you back into Stanton, so that you can get on the bus to get to Warm, is a very, very tricky business, and they, there's also a lack of awareness, so that lack of timing, and they also don't have tho- those trained resource navigators that I'm talking about, the folks that can really plug you into the services that you, that you're needing. Although I'm, they have fabulous volunteers, it's a volunteer-run program with one coordinator, and, and they are terrific. And again, they have laundry services, they have a shower, and this is what I would love to see for downtown Stanton. So there are a lot of things in place, what folks are looking for is really some city buy-in, and what I would love to see us discuss tonight is what city buy-in looks like. This could look like simply participating on a steering committee to help plan this out, what this would look like, perhaps with a city staff person, with an officer from PD, someone from the sheriff's office, someone from council, obviously. It could be part of the larger Stanton housing strategy, so that it really is part of the population that we're looking to eventually house, because obviously the goal isn't to keep somebody coming to a day shelter, the, the goal is to get them stable housing, and so that is certainly part of a larger strategy, so I'll stop there and listen to a, some, answer questions, take comments, and then hopefully come to a consensus. Oh my goodness, y'all are never quiet, come on.
So this is just, again, to just give the go-ahead to, to officially start researching with city staff to put together numbers.
Well, just, it, we might get to, yeah, sure, we, we might get to that, but just, what are your thoughts, what are your thinking?
I mean, yes, absolutely, I guess. I would love to see something happen, I just, you know.
Yeah.
But it, I can say, especially as a downtown business owner, it's, it's definitely, you know, during the day, we can tell when people get dropped off and they're walking and stuff, and so it'd be really great to be able to have a place that they can take a shower, get some services that they might ask, I just love it, yeah.
It's a very realistic, you know, for us, we don't own the facility, we're not trying to build something, and we're also not running with city staff, because it would be a continual difficulty, you know, for us trying to do that, so it's, I definitely applaud your efforts on this, it's wonderful to see, and I'd love to move forward with it.
Yeah, it's definitely not a city, city service, it's just, right, thank you, yes.
So as councilors coming together, deciding that, hey, we would like to see this in the city. So, you know, it's not a government thing, local government thing, or it's the city staff, anything like that, it's just us as councilors saying, this is something that we see that's needed in a city, so how can we just go about implementing it? Michelle has done a great job at seeking out, talking, getting us involved outside of here, you know, getting us involved, walking through it, seeing what it looks like and what it can be, and as far as Warm Shelter, the Warm would be an agent for this particular day shelter, so it wouldn't be city ran or anything like that. We're just looking at, hey, would y'all guys like to see this implemented? And yes, I mean, really, who wouldn't want to see it implemented, right? So, as far as having it part of the housing strategy, I mean, Ms. Rebecca Joyce could answer any of that, to see how this would fit in something that she is already, we are already doing, because I'm a part of that, we are already doing how now the partners can implement and grow, grow this even further.
Yeah, I mean, certainly it's part of the long-term housing strategy.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is the immediate needs part of it, and the Housing Commission is part of the longer-term part, too. Trying, it works very well in the framework. I would think.
It's a thumbs up from Rebecca, she does know.
So do you, would you guys, like, yeah, okay.
Yes, I definitely think it's a great idea, a way for us to collaborate with other agencies to take care of the people in our community, I think it's our duty.
Especially having Warm Shelter people willing to take it on, because they're not enthusiastic amateurs, or the ones that are dependably doing this already. Ms. Joyce?
Yes, I think we could easily include that in, in the housing strategy, because we have, you know, as, as I mentioned at the last presentation, we have, you know, growing housing, preserving housing, and then we have housing stability, which I think that, that this is, and I think one of the goals of the strategy was to plug in how we fit in and with all the other housing organizations and what they do, so I think this would be, the timing is, is perfect for that, so certainly glad to do, to do that, and I think there is a need for a low, low barrier shelter, and then I also appreciate what Ms. Edwards said too, in regards to getting people into permanent housing, I think that's another, another plus, so yeah, I'm happy to do that, and make sure that you all can see a draft of how we intertwine that and provide comments, and we can go from that.
Thank you, Ms. Joyce, any other questions for Ms. Joyce before she sits down? Thank you so much, that's really good to hear, yeah, it's great to hear, you've done so much work on that greater strategy, Ms.
Yeah, I'd just like to add my support, similar to what's already been offered, it's really a well-thought-out, integrated program that connects with what other agencies are already doing for this population, and I think you know, identifying having, being able to track and have a handle, better handle on this population, because there's a facility for them in the daytime, increases the chances that we will be able to kind of move them up to the next tier on a track toward getting permanent housing. So it does, it fits very well with what Rebecca Joyce and what the city is doing in that, in, in that realm, too. So, it's a great work, I, I support it.
Thank you, Councilor Overhold, Overholzer. Yeah, I, you know, I've been talking to people, but I am happy to turn this over to the, the experts who know this inside and out, and Ms. Joyce is one of those people, and I really look forward to seeing how our community can come together to, to make this happen. I think the, the agencies, the, this, the, the communities of faith that I've met with just really wanna see that the city has bought into it, that they, we can show some leadership, that we are committed to seeing this happen as well. And so we just need to see what that's gonna look like. So, I would ask, and if, if all of you agree, actually, I don't know I'm asking, but I would like to say.
I think we understand, okay. I'm gonna talk to Rebecca about.
You talked to Rebecca today.
Thank you, Leslie.
We'll coordinate, I mean, I think we understand the charge, and thank you. That's great overview, so I think we're, I think, I mean, I'm, yeah, I don't have any questions right now, but if we come up with questions, we'll certainly reach out.
Perfect, well, thank you all so much, appreciate that.
Yeah.
Hey, well, if there are. If there's no further business, then the work session is adjourned. If there's no further business, then the work session is adjourned. And we will return at seven PM for our regular, our regular meeting. See you then. Alrighty, it is seven o'clock, and I'd like to call the March twenty seventh regular meeting of the Stanton City Council to order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Tonight's invocation comes to us from Councillor Mayor Shepherd.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I asked a wonderful member of our community, Pastor Juan On, to deliver the invocation. Some of the fine work he does collaborating with others in Stanton has a tremendous impact on our city. Some of his work, I find, is truly inspirational, because he not only nourishes the hungry, but feeds the souls especially in need. So I will let him speak.
Welcome, Pastor, good to see you.
Sawbona is a Zulu reading that means I see you. It is same as saying hello in English. But it's more than just a polite greeting, as it carries the importance of recognizing the worth and dignity of each person. And if you're a member of the tribe, you would reply saying Sekona, which is equivalent to saying, I am here. Stanton Tribe sees you all, not just as elected leaders of our tribe, but as we see as your worth and dignity. I pray that you all do the same with your own tribal people. Pray with me. Dear King of the Universe, we see you as our true leader. See us as your people following your will. Give council members your wisdom and direction, and may they be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. And as they deliver their decisions, may every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. This we pray, in the name of the all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all for being here. Well, we'll start with the mayor's report. First, I'd like to let everyone know that I attended our monthly Library Advisory Board meeting. Some of you were here during the work session, and we listened to a, an update on the terrace project. If you go by the library occasionally, or more than that, you'll see that land has been cleared to the right side of our library, and soon we will have the groundbreaking of our new terrace project, there will be a beautiful sale, and programming will be outdoors under a beautiful sail and under the trees. So I'm looking forward to that, hopefully you can attend the groundbreaking next month. I also wanted to give a quick tip for the library. If you did not know, you can book thirty minutes with a librarian. If you would like to learn how to do email, how to research on the internet, if you would like to learn any of the technology or how to search for books, how to download Libby, the Libby app, you can actually book a librarian, I encourage you to do so, it's a terrific resource that we have in Stanton. I also just wanted to let everyone know, because it's going to be happening on, in two weeks, there will be a senior health fair at Gypsy Hill Park Gym from nine to one. And that is Friday, the third, I believe. And, yes, fourth, I'm sorry, it's the day after our meeting, so Friday, the fourth. So I hope everybody will share that information and make sure that folks who would benefit will be there. Any other things to share from council?
I, I had a very exciting day, because I got to participate in the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank's Shop to Stop Hunger event, so it it was such a fun event to do. You had sixty seconds, some members of the community to get as many groceries as you can together, just between the five contestants that participated in our outreach. We are able to raise enough to cover twenty eight thousand meals today. So that was really exciting. And just being part of the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank and all the good work they do is more important now than ever, because they're facing a lot of budget cuts and funding cuts right now. And they have never been busier. They said that they provide over a hundred and seventy thousand meals a month in our area. That that would be like Stanton, Waynesboro, Verona, Rockingham County. So if you have time to volunteer with them, I'm sure that they would appreciate it. And and that's it, but it was really good, good work being done.
Thank you, Councillor Park. Anyone else? Alrighty, then, we will. Oh, I'm sorry, Councillor Overholzer, I apologize.
I just wanted to say that I, along with Josh Knight, our Communications Manager, attended a briefing by Eric Scorsone, the Director of the Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service at UVA in Harrisonburg, we were invited by the city Harrisonburg, Harrisonburg City Council, so it was wonderful to join with them and listen to this briefing by Dr. Scorsone on sort of an economic outlook for Virginia in light of the big federal cuts in federal employees. We have thirty thousand federal workers in Virginia, five hundred thousand contractors. And so with that and the trickle down effects, so likely economic impacts in Virginia, and his advice, build local and regional partnerships, be flexible and nimble, and seek alternate funding resources. Notwithstanding that sort of bleak news, he said the valley is well positioned for long term growth. And he advises municipalities to keep up our investments in infrastructure to be prepared for that growth. So it was, it was a great briefing and appreciated Harrisonburg City Council inviting us to participate in that.
Thank you so much, Councillor Overholzer, for attending that and sharing that information with us, I appreciate it. Alrighty, we're going to move on to item A, the consent agenda. Per Procedure Memorandum Number fourteen, it's the policy of city council to have routine, non controversial items placed on the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be voted on in one motion. If separate discussion of an item is requested by any member of council, that item shall be removed and considered separately at the end of the regular meeting agenda. Do any council members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda to be placed at the end of the regular meeting agenda for separate consideration? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kessler, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer?
Aye.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Ms. Park?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arrowood?
Aye.
Mayor Edwards?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Moving on to item B, a presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget, Ms. Beauregard.
Ms. Moyers and I are going to give this presentation together, and we're going to sit at the tabletop up here.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you, city council members. Thank you, the folks who came out this evening, too, to hear the budget proposal for FY twenty twenty six. As I said, Ms. Moyers and I are going to tag team on this, so I'll talk a little bit, and then she'll talk and so forth. Okay, so the overall proposed budget for fiscal year twenty six, two thousand twenty six, which begins on July first, is one hundred and sixty four million dollars. That is a fifteen point four million dollar increase over twenty five. And we'll explain that in a minute. The general fund proposed budget, which is the general fund, is what typically where the city services would come out of. So an average citizen or resident, that's, that's where the money's going for the services, for the most part, is seventy nine point six million dollars, a six point one million dollar increase over FY twenty twenty five. So there are several significant themes in the budget for FY twenty twenty six. First of all, it fully supports city schools, the local contribution is seeing an increase of one point six million dollars, which is also an almost increase over FY twenty five. Later this year, we'll see the opening of these independent or city only juvenile and domestic relations district court. And so this budget includes funding operations and personnel for that, which I'll explain later. And also, there is a new regional animal shelter opening in Verona in a few months. It also provides stability in city services and supports employees, which I'll explain later. This budget provides significant increases to regional agencies that provide mental health and human services and support for youth and families. It increases support for tax relief programs, as I'll explain shortly, it increases capacity for fiscal flexibility in the face of many unknowns. This is probably one of the most difficult budgets I've done, that, and I did the math today. This is my twenty second budget presentation in my career, so that was kind of fun to come up with that number. So I know this is what most people, well, tonight, we have a public hearing on the tax rate, and this was a very difficult. This is very difficult to do, I real, I understand how difficult this is. But I felt as city manager that if I did not present a budget that offered city council the most flexibility, and we, and even more importantly, now knowing what we don't know about what is happening to our infrastructure downtown, as far as the tunnels. Originally, I advertised the ninety one cent rate with the idea of giving you flexibility and the things that you frankly wanted to do, and the many unknowns that we, that we, you know, in terms of the federal funding, that we don't really know how that will affect us. So there were already a lot of unknowns, but now we have even more, and these are just two quotes from the budget message. And I can just read them out loud, recent events have demonstrated that those additional funds are more critical than ever, and can build a path to address ongoing city infrastructure maintenance needs, starting with work that is required in the tunnels that run underneath downtown. And additionally, longer term, so it's the immediate needs now, but then if you think about it long term, this is an opportunity for the city to consider and plan for more aggressive and proactive flood mitigation efforts as it relates to the creeks and tunnels that are underneath the core economic and business district.
So we thought it was important to walk you through the ten point four percent increase, because at first glance, it looks very big, and it is. But that compares the overall ordinance to last year's ordinance, and so there are a few things in there that can be a bit misleading. One is the change in capital projects. We have some larger capital spending in the water sewer and stormwater fund than we did last year. That's being spent out of our fund balances in those three funds, and that's about five percent of that ten point four percent increase. The other is two point two percent is related to the local contribution for schools, because that is a transfer from our general fund to their education fund, it's counted twice in that ten point four percent. And that's because it's once, it's in our edu-, our general fund, and it shows again in the education fund. So that is two point two percent of that ten point four percent. Next is a two percent that is related to state and federal funding, which is, in most cases, restricted money. The biggest portion of that is VDOT maintenance funds. They have increased the lane reimbursement per miles rate the last couple of years. And so this budget has the rate that we expect. We won't know the exact rate until July first, but we're kind of basing it on last year's rate. And then that leaves one point two percent for all other operating increases. So moving on to the general fund. It's seventy nine point six million, with general property taxes being the largest part of that, at forty nine point two percent. And then local taxes at twenty five point five, Commonwealth of Virginia at nineteen, and then you can see the rest there. But walking you through the increase in the general fund revenues at the ninety one cent tax rate, that's an increase in real estate taxes of almost four point five million. A small increase in personal property taxes for two hundred and seventy eight thousand. We do not see any material changes coming in our way in sales tax or lodging tax, so those budgets are relatively flat. We've increased the meals tax budget by ninety thousand dollars, as meals tax continues to perform strongly. Business license revenue, we've increased it by one hundred thousand dollars. There you see the VDOT reimbursable revenue that I was talking to you about of one point one million dollar. And then the state share of our increase of the Children's Services Act, that is a significant increase in this twenty six budget. I think seven hundred thousand dollar overall increase in just this Children's Services Act. And so those two numbers, they are restricted expenses, they have lines in the expenditures that offset these revenues. And of course, this is our first year, in the last ten years that we have, we're operating without the Harrisonburg, Rockingham County jail buy-in. And so that is a negative six hundred and sixty five thousand dollars, because we lost that operating revenue this year. The next slide is just our general fund expenditures, with transfer to education being the largest at eighteen point nine. It represents twenty three point seven percent of our expenditures. And with public safety being the next highest category in our general fund, at seventeen point two million. And then so on and so forth. So most importantly, we want to share with you, where is the tax revenue going? And so these next couple of slides work out for every single dollar that has been increased in revenue in the general fund. Starting with schools, one million six hundred forty seven thousand eight fifty two. This is per this funding formula that was signed a couple of years ago, and that's a nine point five five percent increase. Next, we have additional expenditures in this budget, three hundred seventy two thousand seven seventy, related to the Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Courthouse. In this budget, we have one full time sheriff deputy, one part time. That leaves two full time deputies, like, unfunded at this point. Because they would like to have three full time staff in this FY twenty six budget. And it also includes one full time custodian and one part time custodian. They would like to have another full time custodian, but it, right now, that position remains unbunded. And then there's an additional ninety six thousand seven eighty five in operating expenditures, with the largest portion of that being the budget for the utilities to run that building. So next is capital improvements funding, adding six hundred and fifty seven thousand thirty dollars to the transfer to the capital fund. This represents revenue from two cents of that ninety one cents. So two cents is being put into an infrastructure CIP account, with the focus, the first priority being the tunnels that run under the city. So next, a one point one million dollars is salary and benefits. Three percent cost of living increase for full time and part time city employees as of July first. In the state budget, I believe it's still in there, unless it has been eliminated, is a one point five percent bonus for constitutional officer, officers and their staff. A lot of that will be covered by the comp board, but we will have to cover the share that the comp board does not cover. Ten percent increase in health insurance, that is due to continued high claims in our health fund. And then Public Works requested that we unfreeze a traffic position. It was frozen, I believe, in twenty three's budget, to help fund a three dollar an hour raise. And it's been hard for them to operate with a two man crew, and they requested that we restore that unfrozen, that frozen position, so that they can have three to properly control the flow of traffic while they're working on the signals. Three hundred and, about three hundred and six thousand in other expenditures. Seventy six thousand of that is the increase in the real estate tax relief. Seventy-six thousand of that is the increase in the real estate tax relief. Sixteen thousand, five hundred because the police department has requ, they need to replace their canine. Thirty-nine thousand, seven sixty to upgrade the StantonBusiness.com website. That's a request from the Economic Development Department. And then all other city department increases are about a hundred and seventy-four thousand.
Excuse me, Ms. Moyers, is this the canine replace, police canine replacement?
It is the dog, yes.
Actual dog.
The actual dog. So outside agency and Saul partnerships is increasing almost nine hundred and eighty-two thousand. This is a significant number for us this year. With the biggest portion of seven hundred and fifteen thousand going to the Department of Social Services in CSA, which is the Children's Services Act. The state and federal grants will cover almost four hundred and thirty-four thousand of that. But our share is two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Animal shelter expenditures for us are going up sixty-eight percent, which is a hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred. That is driven by two things primarily. One is our usage of the animal shelter. There were a couple of large seizures of animals in calendar year twenty-four, which is what they based our share on for this calculation. And then there are some additional expenditures with the move it into the Verona location. And keep it in the other building until we get it sold. There'll be some utility expenditures there. So this budget also fully funds our ten percent match required for Valley Community Services Board. Last year, if you remember, we had to cap that increase at ten percent. This puts our, our share back at fully funding the ten percent requirement. But it does require a hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three, which is about a fifty percent increase. In our contribution to the Valley Community Services Board. Middle River Regional Jail. Our usage, the jail went down slightly, so that increases about one point three percent, forty-three thousand, eight forty-six. Office on use, youth has requested twenty-nine thousand, fifty-one. Health Department, almost nine thousand. SDDA, eight thousand, eight seventy-one, that is funded with the downtown tax. Children's Advocacy Center, thirty-five thousand. This fully funds their request this year, but it is a two hundred and thirty-three percent increase over what last year's. Contribution was to them.
Yes, was fifteen?
Yes, they requested fifty and we funded them at fifteen. And now this is funding their full fifty thousand dollar request. Talking Book Center, last year was the first year that we had funded them. And they had, they're asking us to increase their contribution by one thousand, seven hundred. That is currently in this budget. This is seventy-four percent increase. The next three are decreases, but they are decreases based on what these agencies have asked us for. So there is this fully funding their request. Shenandoah Valley Partnerships went down eighty-one dollars. All of the line items associated with the central Shenandoah Planning District Commission were a negative one thousand, five oh three. And then our share of the juvenile detention center is going down significantly at one hundred and nine thousand, eight forty-four. And that is due primarily because they're going to use some of their fund balance. When in their twenty-six budget. And then a decrease for the Stanton Community Capital Fund of five thousand dollars. And then there, to the right, you'll see the V dot reimbursable funds that is tied directly to state revenue. So that does not come out of the tax revenue. Increase of a little over a million dollars, which is fifty-two percent. And it's for qualified expenditures only.
So I'm going to go into, these are, each slide is, has, these are about functional areas now. So I'm going to start with personnel. This is general fund only. So Ms. Moyers already mentioned the three percent, percent cost of living increase for full and part-time employees. And this is really so we can stay competitive. This is typically what, this is what I've heard is what other localities are giving. So we need to absolutely stay competitive in this market right now. We also have other structural salary adjustments in the amount of hundred and six thousand dollars. And then the bonus was mentioned, which is partially funded by the Compensation Board at forty-two thousand. Health insurance is another two hundred and two thousand. And again, this is based on high claims. And then we have new positions for J and D R and to restore funding for the Public Works Traffic Position. And we'll go over more details of each of these shortly too.
Ms. Bobber, would you prefer questions at the end?
If you like have a question now, that's fine.
Oh yeah, I was just looking at the three percent and staying competitive. Is the three percent across the board all departments or do some departments have higher compensation?
No, it's, it's across the board. The, the only difference would be constitutional officers. Every constitutional officer office except Commonwealth Attorney is follows the city pay plan. And so they would receive what the state would give them, but all the other departments would receive the three percent.
And I do believe the recommended state amount is three percent.
Actually, this is the same.
And so we are comparable to other localities our size.
From what we've heard so far, yes ma'am.
I have a question about the health insurance premiums, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
So two hundred, two thousand, which is a ten percent increase. Are the employees being asked to bear any share of the increase? Or is their share of the insurance going to be going up at all?
Yes, so the city share and the employee's contribution will be going up ten percent equally.
So each ten percent each to cover the increased costs?
Yes.
Now, we won't know those costs for sure until later this calendar year because our benefits are on a calendar year. So hopefully that will go down, but this is what we budgeted right now. But we'll, we will be able to communicate more to employees later this year, once we have those final costs. As far as education, the proposed transfer is eighteen point nine million dollars to the school. This equals twenty-three point seven percent of the general fund budget. The school board's proposed budget, they have not adopted their budget yet. That will be.
Their April meeting.
April meeting, yes. Their total budget's fifty-one point four million, which is a thirty million dollar increase over FY twenty-five. And then the portion of the school, the portion of our general fund debt that belongs to the schools is forty-two point three million. Or sixty-four percent of the total general fund debt. And that is mostly the high school. As far as health and welfare, there's an increase of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We've already talked about a lot of these increases. This is where the Children's Services Act is housed, this functional area. Also Valley Community Services Board. And for a third year, they are going to be banking our funds to set aside for a receiving center crisis stabilization center. So again, we are fully funding them this year. We did not do that last year. And I'm sure we'll be coming back to you later this year about that crisis stabilization center as, as those plans are being formulated. This is also where the Children's Advocacy Center lives. And then real estate tax relief, city council back in January, you all approved increases to the asset and income limits. Income being fifty thousand, assets being eighty thousand. So that hopefully will maybe mean that more people will be eligible for that, those programs. Veterans tax release continues to grow, so there's an increase in that budget as well. Under Public Works, the main, a lot of the main drivers here have to do with the J and D R District Courthouse. Again, there are custodians, one and a half custodians budgeted, as well as the restoring funding for the traffic position. For the J and D R, there's seventy-seven thousand dollars in new expenses for utilities and other operating. And then Ms. Moyers talked briefly about the V dot reimbursable funds of one million. You can see that's most of that one point four right there. Again, those are eligible expenditures. They can only be used for certain things such as paving, sidewalk repairs, street line painting, traffic signals and right-of-way maintenance. And I just put a note that Public Works did ask for one more full-time custodian, but that remains unfunded. Under public safety, the increase is almost seven hundred thousand. Police Department had several increases to make note of. One is for the canine replacement. There is a twenty-seven thousand dollar program expenditure that was previously funded by the Virginia State Police. And then thirty-one thousand in a, for a forensic digital evidence software that was previously funded with asset forfeiture funds. And this is also where the middle jail, regional, regional jail is housed. And the decrease for the Shenandoah Valley Juvenile Detention Center. Continuing with public safety, Office on Youth is also here. And this twenty-nine thousand dollar increase includes a request to convert two part-time positions. A coordinator and a program assistant to two full-time positions. And that is so they can continue to meet the needs of youth and families in our region. Waynesboro and Augusta County, I believe, are also supporting this request as well. And then we talked briefly about this Animal Services Center, which will be opening in Verona in May. And as Ms. Moyers mentioned, we are going to still own the current building for some time. I believe the budget has six months of expenses for that second, for the current facility. Some, at some point we will sell that. And then of course, there are additional costs with the new shelter. It is a larger facility, so it requires some different, some additional operating cost. Especially since we, it'll be brand new, we'll hopefully we'll kind of figure the budget out as we go along. And so that'll be very exciting when that opens. Judicial administration, an increase of four hundred and seven thousand. This is where the city sheriff expenses for J and D R District Courthouse live. In the budget is a, is, is one is a full year for three full-time sheriff deputies that were added last year. But were not effective until January first of this calendar year. And then effective July first are one and a half additional FTE sheriff deputies. And not in this budget are two other full-time positions and six, six new vehicles. So I just, we thought it was important to make, just put it out there. What the J and D R District Court is really costing the city. Obviously, there's annual debt service. Everybody sees the building out there on West Beverly being built. That alone is one point six million dollars. For the sheriff's piece, you have five hundred, just over five hundred and five thousand dollars for positions. For equipment such as body worn cameras, training and travel, wearing apparel, et cetera. And that still doesn't include, as I mentioned, the two full-time positions and six new vehicles, which would add another over five hundred thousand dollars. And then you have building maintenance department, which is a full-time position, a part-time position, utilities and cleaning supplies. And again, that does not include a full-time custodian that they requested. So overall annually, to operate our own J and D R District Court is two million, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars. Under general government, we have, of course, the cost of living and the health insurance premiums. The city's property insurance premiums will be going up twenty-nine thousand dollars. And then in FY twenty-five, we had included a line item for council in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. That has not been utilized this year. So we did remove that for twenty-six, but we'll be carrying that over into twenty-six. So you all can determine at what point you, what you would like to do with those funds. So you don't have to spend it by June thirtieth. We will have that carried over, but we did not add another fifty thousand. Under community development, of course, cost of living and health insurance. Two items here is the StantonBusiness.com website, which was one of the goals in the marketing plan was to update this website. And to make it align, to, to make it align better with that marketing plan. And to, and to actually be able to better market Stanton Crossing, to market the city. And hopefully that will have some, you know, that should have some benefit in terms of who we're attracting to the city as far as bringing in business. And then economic development agreements are increasing by twelve thousand dollars, the agreements that are existing today.
Can you explain what that means, economic agreements?
There's an economic development agreement out there. Chick-fil-A, McDonald's.
Right.
So anytime we have additional meals tax come in from those locations. We have to increase the budget here to pay for their share of, of the EDA agreement. That I believe is forty percent gets returned to developer.
So under recreation parks and library, other than the cost of living increase and the healthcare premiums. We have additional funds for the purchase of library books using state aid funds.
So as far as the CIP goes, I'm only going to walk you through things that have changed since I introduced the CIP. And we will also have a work session that includes CIP, April third, I believe, next Thursday. So the changes that have been made since I introduced it was the two cents for infrastructure. That's seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, thirty dollars with the immediate focus being on the tunnels that run underneath the city. So Wiley Wilson is performing the tunnel survey and structural evaluation. This was funded with ARPA funds. Once they started their evaluation, they saw that there were a lot of issue, structural integrity issues. That is why part of the Wharf parking lot has been blocked off. And the, the funds would just be used to address any of the needs that we need to address that. Although at this time, we do not know what the costs are associated with this. It is a big unknown for us. So the Gypsy Hill Pool Park, Gypsy Hill Park Pool House. We had to set aside some ARPA funding to kind of. Make it a little prettier, like paint, flooring, fixtures. But once the analysis was done on the pool house, it also has some structural repair issues that needed to be done. So we could repair the bare minimum or we could replace the pool house or we would have to close it. So we are going down the path of replacing the pool house. The current construction budget after the sixty-five percent design is two point five million. I just wanted to note that sixty-seven percent of that two point five million will be funded with interest that we have earned. On our CIP and ARPA funds. And that is because we took some of our money and put it with the Virginia Investment Pool. And we have been earning pretty decent interest rates there. And so a lot of that interest that we earned with the CIP and the ARPA funding is being funneled into this Parks and Rec Reserve. That is funding the construction of this pool house.
Ms. Moyers, just about the pool house, was this one of the, was this a building? Do you know the age of it?
Nineteen fifty-eight.
Yeah, it's, it's an old building. It was founded.
So the new proposed structure will be two buildings. There'll be individual unisex bathrooms instead of like a men's and women. That way, that families with young children, you can just go into the bathroom, provides better security and privacy. There'll be a covered concession area, as long as the bid doesn't come in too high and it has to be value engineered out. And then outdoor shower area. Next is the Edgewood Sidewalk Project. Original estimate was almost one point one million dollars. The V dot estimate now is between four million and four point seven million. You guys voted to cancel the two Augusta Street projects and move that funding to the Edgewood. And the additional shortfall would be funded out of the sidewalk reserve that is already in the CIP.
Ms. Moyers, I'm sorry, could we go back to the pool house? Because you know, when you're thinking of a big project like that and, and talking about millions of dollars. And thinking that it's a, a building that's used for a few months out of the year. My, my question would be, is there a possibility that the, that the builder, that the architect could look at ways of using. Making parts of that building usable year round? So it's not something that is just sitting empty from say mid-August to end of May. It just would, seems like it would make it more worth, worthwhile. Is that a conversation that can still be had or was the design study, is the design study completed?
There are sixty-five percent ways through the design. We're open to ideas. If you have some suggestions on how it could be used. We originally were going to put in all-season bathrooms. That was going to add three to four hundred thousand dollars to the cost and it was just making the project unaffordable. So those have been removed. I'm not sure the, the building that you see that will house the bathrooms. Will be winterized and so there'll be, we had to remove the, the heat out of there to, as part of the value engineering to get the cost down. Now, the other building that will have the office, the teller and the concessions, that will be, that will have heat and everything. So I'm not sure what the use would be. We're open to suggestions.
Yeah, no, thank you. Yeah, thank you. I don't have any off the top of my head, but I was thinking, you know, and I-
Yeah, no, thank you. Yeah, thank you. I don't have any off the top of my head, but I was thinking, you know, and I've heard others say it, but we should probably think of a way to use a building throughout the year if possible. But no, I'm sorry, I can't offer you anything.
But the funds were coming from the ARPA funds.
The initial design work did, the construction is coming from the Parks and Rec Public Use Facilities Reserve, which initially started out as the MOXIE Reserve. So we have been putting money into that, $600,000 a year. And then we have been putting interest that we earned into this fund. And so those are the two sources for the construction. So the debt service sinking fund, $6.6 million with 5.7 being transferred from the general fund and the other $900,000 coming out of the fund balance of the debt service sinking fund. Just to remind you, when we took out the debt on the courthouse, it was our plan that we would use some of this debt service fund balance until we got to the point where the crossing is paid off in a few years. And at that point, when we run out of reserves, we will be able to afford the debt service with just the transfer from the, the general fund. We have three debt policy ratios that we need to, to meet that were set by council. Net direct debt as a percent of taxable assessed value, we have to stay under four and we're at 1.96. Debt service as a percent of total government expenditures, the limit is 15 and we're at 8.72. And the third ratio is one that we have not met in the last few years since taking out the high school debt. It is a ratio that requires you to pay back at least half of your outstanding principal in the next 10 years. And that's very hard to do with a 30-year loan as big as the high school debt was. So this ratio will be 4.27, I mean, 49.27 next year. We're required to be at 50. But we will be meeting it in FY27. We'll be back to exceeding that 50% requirement. So moving into the proprietary funds, those are the funds that operate off of usage fees and not off of tax, tax dollars. There are no proposed utility increases for this year. But we will need to reevaluate the fees next year because there are some significant capital needs in our future. With water, sewer and environmental, which includes our landfill. So the Augusta Regional Landfill Five-Year Capital Plan requires Stanton, our share would be $5 million over the next five years. The current fee structure does not support that. That $5 million is to relocate the scale house and the admin office, replace, replace large pieces of equipment. It's to open Phase Six and foreclosure cost on the older phases. And so important aspect of this is controlling the amount of garbage that goes into the landfill. Because that is what determines how much we pay in operating expenses and how much our, our share of the capital is by how much we put into the landfill.
So that's a good segue. So I'm going to talk briefly about refuse modernization, which you heard about in the work session. I thought Mr. Irvin did a really nice job of explaining how that's going so far. But just remind everybody, we've been rolling out new bins and here are the goals. And I thought Ms. Moyers summed it up well in terms of the landfill. In terms of having cleaner streets, improved curb appeal, employee safety is, is increased. They have technology in the trucks to improve efficiency and most importantly diverting waste from the regional landfill, as she just spoke. It's incredibly expensive. And, you know, we have to, anything we can do to help divert waste away from the landfill is going to be important. As you just heard Ms. Moyers say, I mean, that's millions and millions of dollars that we're looking at in the near future. We do have some other ways to help kind of drive that, such as an extra bin fee, bag tags for extra trash and really focusing on making sure yard waste goes into the yard waste section of the landfill and not the garbage section of the landfill. So that is the purpose of doing the once a month pickup of yard waste to ensure that it actually goes to the right place.
Excuse me, our question about this, the $5 million for our share of the five-year plan for the, for the capital improvements plan for the landfill, is that paid over five years, the $5 million for our share?
Yes, the first, in '26 and '27, it's about a million dollars. I believe in '28 or '29, when they're opening Phase Six of the landfill, it jumps to 1.9 and then it drops down in FY30.
So it's paid over three years, five million?
And, and when's the last time this took place? Do you know when the last time they had to do a?
Sell closure?
We opened Cell 5, last year, last year.
So that sale that could have, that may cost millions of dollars was filled in a year?
It will be about four to five years by the time we get to that, that year that it's planned.
Yeah. So speaking, you know, so again, trying to divert as much away from the landfill as possible. I mean, that's where the centralized recycling center comes in, usage is growing and materials really are diverted from the landfill. So the more we can use that, the better. We will now have twice a year bulky trash heavy item pickup, which has usually been once a year. So that's a service enhancement. I talked about monthly yard waste. Again, diverting it from the landfill is critically important. And then I talked a little bit about the technology and this will help staff with service efficiencies, customer inquiries, et cetera. And so as far as what's next, we're still doing the residential rollout. We have a couple more weeks, I believe, is what Dave Irvin said, or maybe not quite that long. We're going to be evaluating that. We're going to adjust where necessary. We're going to guess, we're going to be flexible. But we would like everybody to please be flexible and patient as we roll this out. And then we will have changes for commercial customers in the downtown business district following that. Budget balancing. So we obviously had to make a lot of difficult choices as we do in every budget. And the first thing I'd like to note is that we had $430,000 in operating expenditures that we, that were across city departments that were either reduced or realigned. And doing this allowed to fund some new requests without having to find other funds. So that was a good thing. We actually looked at kind of some trends where departments were spending money. And we either reduced accordingly or moved it someplace else. And so that added up to $430,000. The FY26 CIP is going to be funded, as it has always, as it's been for a while, out of carryover. That's 3.6 million. Many new department requests remain unfunded. One and a half million in new and upgraded positions and in benefits and then more than 2.4 million in operational and equipment expenditures. There are 146,000 in new agency, outside agency requests that remained unfunded. We budget upfront for position vacancies, 300,000. So in a position, when somebody leaves a position, then we, you know, account upfront for the savings and not filling that position. And then we're not fully funding our debt service fund right now. We're using almost, we're using quite a bit, almost a million dollars in terms of fund balance to do that. And Ms. Moyers talked about that earlier. That we, we plan to do that once, until the Stanton Crossing debt was paid off in a few years. So that being said, I'd like to talk, spend a few minutes on accomplishments as we have had quite a few. The first that I'd like to point out is the $9 million Virginia Business Ready Site Program for Stanton Crossing. And this is for the water tank and infrastructure. And this is in addition to the grant we received, a $4.5 million grant for sewer infrastructure. So this is very exciting and you've probably seen the humongous pole that you can see from 81 and that's where the water tank will be. So it's very exciting. We also opened Crossing Way, which is the road that goes through Stanton Crossing. That has a shared use path, a park and ride lot, transit stop. And solar powered lights will be at the park and ride coming the summer, early fall. And that was done in partnership with the planning district commission. So that'll be very exciting. We had a lot of new businesses in the city, several in the downtown corridor and around the city. And then we had some industrial growth and also new housing. So you can see the list here. I'm not going to read all of these. But this is very exciting to see this list because clearly there's a lot of activity going on in the city as far as economic development and new business. We have a lot of infrastructure projects happening right now. Some are more visible than others. For instance, the Gypsy Hill string restoration is probably the most visible right now, in addition to the J and D R District Courthouse. So lots of great infrastructure happening. Many of these were grant funded, which is also was a great thing, you know, when we get grants, we love that. The Union Town Neighborhood Action Plan, survey work was done and the city applied for a build grant application. So we'll know later this year if we receive that.
Leslie, was that July for the build grant? We, good notification.
I think we said six months. Yeah, it's probably about right. And yeah. The Western Revitalization Strategy was completed and adopted. And we had started an update to the comprehensive plan, which will be completed next year. And then we are in our sixth year as a HUD entitlement community and we receive over $328,000 in CDVG HUD funds. So this cover got brochure of the year. This news just came out recently, which is very exciting. And these are just some examples of our tourism accomplishments. And then the Stanton Police Department remains the longest continually accredited law enforcement agency in the world. That's not an exaggeration. I do mean the world. And then as far as Community Connect, that is a program through the fire and rescue. And you can create a profile and you can actually, it helps streamline emergency response. And it's basically like a risk reduction platform as far as having persons that have the skills to help EMS and to help responders kind of respond to emergencies. So that's been very successful. And last but not least, our finance department does an amazing job both on the budget and on the annual comprehensive financial report. And so I have kudos to them, everybody on Ms. Moyers' team for their amazing work. And we have an amazing group of department heads and directors and staff. And we have so many great employees that work for the city that do great work every single day. And I want to thank all of them. So this is just day one of the FY26 proposed budget. Everything should be posted online this evening. So you can view this presentation. You can view the full budget proposal. You can contact city council. Obviously, we have budget work sessions coming up on April 3rd, 10th and 24th. There is a public hearing this evening on the real estate tax rate. And in two weeks, the overall budget ordinance public hearing will take place. And then April 24th is the scheduled budget adoption. So with that, Ms. Moyers and I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions from council members?
Does the budget include the grant possession that we were proposing, the new possession to seek grants?
It, it does not right now, no.
Ms. Beauregard, what is the cost of, what is the, the cost of one cent or the value of one cent in, in taxes? Was it about $330,000 or?
I think I want to say 328 and some change.
Ms. Moyers is looking for it. Right. So, so when the tax rate goes up or down, it is the amount that the city would either take as revenue or?
Correct.
Or lose as.
But it is at the current now that we, that would be current now without taking it higher is 300 and?
It's 338. And we only budgeted about 97% of that because we don't budget for 100% collection rate. Because not everybody pays 100% of the time.
Thank you. That's helpful. Well, that was hard to hear and I'm sure it was hard to do. And I'm glad to see a full house this evening. We do have a public hearing to have community participation. And I look forward to an ongoing conversation with both staff. Thank you, Ms. Moyers and Ms. Beauregard and all the other department heads, folks in the room. Thank you so much for your part in informing that, that budget. Before I, oh, so wait a minute. So now we will have a public hearing. And before we start that, I would like to say a word and welcome former mayor Steve Claffey and his wife, Pat. Ms. Claffey, it's very good to see both of you here. Thank you. It's been a while. I've missed you. And I keep telling the sheriff that I'm going to recognize him as an elected official in our room. And so thank you all for being here. It's good to see you, Phil Jerome. And I'm sorry if I'm going to miss everybody. And so in a moment, I will start the public hearing. This is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about the specific topic on the agenda, and that is the tax rate. It's .91. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. For Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on this particular public hearing. If you raise your hand during this public hearing, you will also be able to raise your hand for other public hearings and during matters from the public. Please keep your comments to five minutes. Once everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, I will then close the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. So if you wish to speak, please approach the podium and we will alternate between individuals physically present and those attending via Zoom. Remember, this is only about the tax rate. And again, this is a time to listen. If you would like to stay afterwards, we're all happy to speak with you afterwards. Thank you. Please approach the podium if you would like to speak.
Hi, my name is Gretchen Wozel. I'm located at 746 Opie Street.
Good evening.
Here in Stanton. I'm new to Stanton. And I was just questioning why my tax rate went up 42% from my real estate taxes. It was an increase of 42% from two years ago. That seemed like a rather large jump. So I just wanted to understand how that process works here.
During the public hearing, we are discussing just the .91. Real estate assessments are a subject that can be addressed to the city assessor. This isn't about your, your assessment, your real estate assessment, the value of your house.
Okay.
So we have the city assessor, Ms. Mr. Flynn.
Okay. And I have a couple of questions on the budget that was just presented, if I could.
This isn't a time for.
Okay.
Yeah, I do want to hear.
Well, I was just trying to address the, the, the budget you put forward. So I thought you'd want to hear questions. But okay, got it.
My name is Roger Prier. I'm a resident at 337 East Beverly Street. I'm here to urge the council to reduce the property tax rate to 80, to 80 cents per hundred of assessed value. While the property assessments have risen sharply in recent years, it is the tax rate that ultimately determines the financial burden placed on homeowners and renters. A lower tax rate is necessary to maintain fairness and affordability in our community. Over the past four years, property owners have seen their tax bills increase by 50% on average, with some experiencing increases closer to 100%. Meanwhile, the real estate market in Stanton is showing signs of decline. It's going the wrong direction for what you have in mind. In February 2025, the median home sale price dropped by nearly 10% year over year. And the sales to list price ratio has also decreased, meaning homes are now selling for less than their listed price. These indicators suggest that raising tax burden is not aligned with actual tax, with actual property values. Lowering the tax rate to 80 cents per $100 would not reduce the city's revenue. Rather, it would ensure the property owners are not unfairly burdened, overburdened due to inflated assessments. This rate adjustment would allow the city to collect the same amount of revenue it has received over the past two years while providing, while providing much-needed relief to residents, especially those on fixed incomes. Over 30% of the population of Stanton is over 60 years old. Additionally, raising property taxes are making household, housing less affordable across the city. Many landlords have no choice but to raise rents to offset higher tax bills, placing additional financial strain on renters. If the tax rate is not adjusted, housing costs will continue to rise, worsening the affordability crisis and pushing more residents out of the city. By lowering the tax rate, the council can help stabilize rental costs and ensure that Stanton remains an affordable place. and ensure that Stanton remains an affordable place to live for all its residents. I strongly urge the council to take immediate action to reduce the tax rate and further further and prevent further financial strain on Stanton's homeowners and renters. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Would you mind, could you leave that um, the the piece of paper? So I the, I was trying to do your math. Thank you. And do we have anyone on Zoom, Mr. Kusakur? I apologize, I missed.
We do, but we have no hands raised at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Pamela Mason Wagner, one six four North Coulter Street. First, I want to thank our budget director and our city manager for doing such a terrific job explaining the budget to citizens who aren't familiar with how the city spends its money. Secondly, I want to thank council for being thoughtful about people's money and how they as council members decide to spend people's money. I chose to relocate to Stanton about seven years ago. And I have seen the value of my property increase. I have also received terrific service from the city. And I chose to live inside the city as opposed to other places in the area because I wanted good snow removal and I wanted reliable trash collection. And I really appreciate the recycling center and all the other parks and amenities that we have in our city. So I'm probably one of the few people here tonight to speak in favor of the ninety one percent, uh ninety one cent tax rate. I feel like we get what we pay for in our city and as citizens, it's our obligation to make a contribution to the collective for the services we receive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kusakur, is there anyone online?
We have no hands raised.
Thank you. Good evening. Oh, sorry. Is? Dr. Miller, where you gonna speak? Okay, is there anyone else wishing to to speak on the ninety one cent tax rate? And there's no one else on Zoom with their hand raised?
No, ma'am.
All right. Did you look at the past? Oh, sorry.
Sir, are you a city resident?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Steve Claffey and I live at sixteen eighteen Dogwood Road. It's a pleasure to be back. It's good to see a lot of friendly faces here. It's been a while since I've been here. I said when uh the last meeting that I was not going to come on a weekly basis or a monthly basis to uh address council. And I think y'all have done a magnificent job and I appreciate all the effort that's gone into this budget. One of the things that we stressed and worked on during the time I was on council was being competitive on tax rates. And I think that the comment was made here numerous times. So we want to keep the salaries competitive by going up three percent. We're not sure what everybody else is doing. But uh, we're gonna make sure that our salaries keep right up there with three percent. But our tax rate is not competitive. It has been a sore subject for me for the not last five years. Augusta County takes us to lunch every day. They do not provide all the services that a city does. But for a citizen who's looking at paying sixty cents on the dollar versus ninety cents on the dollar, it's a substantial savings to move to Augusta County. To live in Waynesboro allows you a tax rate in the seventies. For what we got last year for the city of Stanton, the revenue neutral dollar point is seventy eight cents. And we want to go in the other direction and go ninety one. So we're not being more competitive, we're being less competitive. This is eventually gonna drive business out of Stanton. Let me give you an example. I know well that Brad and Alice, you have always been strong advocates, as I have been, for the Union Town Initiative. But you take Union Town Initiative and you're gonna need somebody to come in and develop some property for you. If they're looking at having to pay a ninety one cents rate to build in Stanton, or they can go to the old Stanton mall site, which anybody that has driven by it lately has seen that they've leveled it, they've cleaned it up. They got a couple of massive piles that they're hauling out of there. The rumor is that Augusta County wants to put resident in residential in there. If you go to the Augusta County mall site, well, the Stanton mall site, which is in the Augusta County tax bracket, you're gonna be able to develop there at sixty cent rate. And you go less than a mile over Betsy Bell Hill to our Union Town site, you're gonna have to pay ninety one cents. It's hurting the city of Stanton to keep raising their tax rates and not give a competitive tax rate. Please do not raise this. Please think in terms of taking it down. Budgets are a difficult matter. Everybody has had that has had children knows that children always want. And mom and dad have to decide what you need. That's what y'all's job is this year. I don't, I don't miss, I don't miss you all for this responsibility. But there's a time to say no more. We can't keep going with a higher and a higher tax rate because everybody wants stuff. We have to decide where the cuts need to come from and how we're gonna do it. I thank you for all your time and your efforts and I know what y'all are going through. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Kusakur, do we have anyone with their hands raised?
No, ma'am. We have no hands raised.
Anyone else like to speak this evening about the tax rate? Alrighty, alrighty.
I'm probably gonna be really nervous doing this.
That's okay.
Um, so I just would like to say I understand why you have to consider raising the tax rate. I'm not in favor of it either. I should have said my name, Bonda Lacy, eight oh eight Craig Drive, Stanton. And I am also a Realtor. I also serve on a housing summit committee. It's a combination of different organizations around the community from Saul. So there's a lot of need. There's a lot of problems. I do not want it raised. I do think it hurts us. I see it as a Realtor that it hurts us with the competitiveness of with other municipalities. And I do believe that our values are going to remain strong on our real estate and possibly continue to increase. The the economics, according to our economists at the Virginia Realtors, say this in their budget present, or when they did not budget, in their economic presentations, they say that this area is strong. We are so strong that we're drawing in these companies to come here, which means we have the workforce, which which means that's a positive for values. If you do vote this in, I hope you will consider where this money is going to. Serving on this housing summit committee and I see the organizations you're giving to. And I I do appreciate that you have agreed to give the Children's Advocacy Center what they asked for. That is a big, very big need here. But there's other ones that I feel like they need to be held more accountable. We need more education here to educate our disadvantaged citizens who don't know how to go get that better job, who don't even work at all. Like, I pass by the mission every day. I pass by homeless people walking down the street on the way home. I'm down west Beverly multiple times a day. The lack of education here is a problem. We do have people that can work. They don't know how. Some of them are mental illness, but they could still work. There's just not that education program out there for them. So when you talked about or asked about what we could do with the pool house, and I'm totally agreement with that, like we should be able to use it more if somebody can come up with ideas. We also need to push the organizations that we're giving money to out of the budget to do more. And they've got the volunteers. I'm a volunteer. I don't get paid to serve on that summit. But we need to push them to do more, to lift up the people who are already here that need help to get a better job. There are better jobs. It's just some people don't have the what do you call it, the self-esteem to go after it. And that's what I'm hoping to get from the summit. And I just hope that you will put a little bit of pressure on there, especially if you do vote to raise the rate. I hope you don't, because I still think you can continue slowly to get our assessments in line with what the values of our properties are. And we need to do that. Lynchburg is very strong about that, that whole area. And I've said it for years that we needed to do it. And unfortunately, you're doing the work that, and I'm not talking about when Mr. Claffey was on there. I used to own a restaurant in downtown Stanton and I used to come here and fice. The values weren't there. And so the money they weren't making then is impacting y'all now, and I hate that. I do hope that you will consider this tax rate and not do a the rate increase. But if you do, I hope that you will also look at where our money is going. I'm not out of time. The other one is the dump. I'm gonna tell you about the dump. So I have a little truck. I haul stuff to the dump. And I had all these boxes. I was gonna put them, this guy came over helping me that worked there. And he went to grab the boxes and I said, no, I'm gonna take those to the recycle thing. And he says, why? I said, to recycle them. He said, they'll just bring it right around here and dump it here. So you need to make sure Augusta County is doing what they're supposed to be doing too. That they are recycling what goes there and they're not dumping it back there in the landfill. Just saying, you can borrow my truck and try it and see if it doesn't happen to you too. I just think there needs to be more accountability. I don't know who's gonna do that, but I guess I'm in the public too much and see things. So anyway, thank you for your service. It was a great presentation. So I wished everybody would have been here to hear it, to see what has to be paid for. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Lucy. Do we have anyone with their hands raised, Mr. Kusakur?
No, ma'am. We have no hands raised.
Anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Alrighty. I will call the public hearing come to a close. And we will move on to our next item. Item D, a consideration of Augusta County landfill leases. Um, Ms. Beauregard.
Yeah, Mr. John Blair will take care of this item this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Edwards, members of council. Before you tonight are two proposed leases at the Augusta County landfill. Just to give you a brief background, in nineteen ninety nine, Stanton, Augusta County, and Waynesboro created the landfill and established a land trust. That land trust is governed by the city managers of Stanton and Waynesboro, as well as the Augusta County Administrator. The agreement that established the landfill itself said that if the trustees ever wish to rent out a portion or lease out a portion of the landfill, they must get the governing body's approval of each jurisdiction. There are two proposed leases before you tonight. Uh, one is for approximately seventy six acres, the other is for approximately a hundred and sixteen acres. Both are to be used for pasture land. You may be familiar that Virginia Tech houses what is the State Land Evaluation Advisory Council. This is the statewide group that the tax commissioner sits on and and other citizens. They establish the value of farmland each year for for purposes of land use taxation. They have established for Augusta County a rate of twenty five dollars and fifty cents an acre. Um, when you look at the acreage and the proposed lease amounts, fifty one hundred dollars and thirty four hundred dollars, these are in line with those, the the twenty five dollars and fifty cents an acre pasture land value established by the State Landed Evaluation Advisory Council. And so again, these do correspond to the market values established for land use taxation. Uh, they are both before you tonight and again, happy to answer any questions.
The members? Members of council.
I mean, are are these in line with what you, what we've seen, like market forces?
I think.
You're an expert in this area.
I am not an expert, but I think in fairness, again, this is again the our assessor here. Um, this is SLIAC, which is the acronym. This is the value that they establish statewide for. And again, when I say statewide, they do look at regions and establish the different values for pasture land, cropland, and the others.
It's not developed, which I think is why it is not a very high.
So it would be a lease and the amount today that we get from the leasing that would be divided between.
It goes to the landfill.
It goes to the landfill.
Revenue for the landfill.
Revenue for the landfill.
Questions? I'll entertain a motion then.
Madam Mayor, I move to permit the Augusta County landfill trustees to execute the leases to Charles Schoolly and Jesse Hershberger as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Uh, is there any further discussion? Mr. Kusakur, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kusakur. Moving on to item E, a consideration of an amendment to Stanton City Code, section six point one zero point zero one zero. Ms. Beauregard.
Turn it back over to Mr. Blair.
Thank you, Mr. Blair.
All right. Uh, thank you again, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, before you tonight is what I would classify as a cleanup amendment. In two thousand and two, the Stanton City Council uh effectively decriminalized a number of animal control offenses and made them civil penalty in nature. Um, and therefore they can be prepaid. And again, there's not a misdemeanor criminal conviction if somebody violates them. One of those is to get the rabies vaccinations for dogs, cats, and ferrets. Again, in two thousand and two, the Stanton City Council decriminalized it and placed it in the chart for civil offenses. However, the nineteen sixty four code section, for whatever reason, was not amended. It still has a misdemeanor penalty, even though that's not what is actually charged. But this would just delete those misdemeanor criminal penalties to make it consistent with the civil penalties instead.
Thank you. Are there questions from council? I don't know if we want to criminalize people not getting the vaccinations, but um, I am curious why it's ferrets.
I don't, that's in the state as well.
I'm just curious, how many charges, such charges do we have every year?
I do not know that information. We can certainly provide it to you. We'll have our animal control officer provide it to you.
Any other questions for Mr. Blair? Okay, well, I'll take, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt the amendments to Stanton Code, section six dot ten dot zero ten as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kusakur, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blair. Thank you. Moving on to our last item, item F, an update on Virginia Department of Transportation, Richmond Avenue Road Diet and Roundabout and Project. And uh, Ms. Beauregard?
I'm gonna stay here. I think I think I asked Miles okay with that, but he's gonna walk us through this presentation. We're back. We were here a month ago, and I'd like Mr. Claffey to hear this unless Casey doesn't know that council approved the Edgewood Sidewalk Project. And they had identified some local funding, so that's happening. I wanted him to know that.
I think he was at Hilton Head.
Maybe. So we resolved that issue. Uh, that time we informed you that VDOT had told us the funds they had identified to fund the single lane roundabout were in question. They are definitely in question. So we, on the day before this agenda was published, we received this information from VDOT and quickly put it on the agenda to um, get this in front of you and start. get this in front of you and start thinking about what happens next. So at that, I'm gonna turn it over to Lyle and go from there.
Evening.
Thanks, Leslie. Madam Mayor and council. Good evening. So as Leslie mentioned, I'm here to give an update on the Richmond Avenue Road Diet and Roundabout Project. Just wanna go quickly through just the background of how we got here and for this couple of times in the past month or so. But of course, the original scope of the project was to have a two-lane roundabout at the Richmond Avenue and Greenville Avenue intersection, as well as the Richmond Avenue Road Diet to go up the hill. It included raised medians and a shared use path. The initial VDOT smart scale funding that was awarded, based on the estimate back at the time, the application was 2.25 million. And of course, the big shocker last year, we got from VDOT is they're getting into design. They said, a revised estimate for this project of the original scope is fifteen point eight million. So of course, that's a thirteen and a half million dollar shortfall. And there's the sketch of the original scope with the two-lane roundabout and the road diet going up Richmond Avenue. So this past fall, we heard from VDOT back in November and then we presented some updates last month in February. And VDOT had had their consultant design and look into an alternative roundabout that would be less expensive, less costly. And that is the updated estimate for that is a seven point eight million dollars for the sketch you see there. And this would interface with the Greenville Avenue Road Diet project to the south. But it does not include any improvements for the Richmond Avenue Road Diet, other than just to get traffic into and out of the roundabout there safely. Also, since it did not include the road diet aspect, they did a concept and estimate of if we were to choose to use local funds to implement a reduced scope Richmond Avenue Road Diet to get up to Village Drive. That would include the shared use path on the north side, concrete sidewalk to the south and raised median. They estimated that would be 1.36 million dollars additional. And again, there's the elements of that. And so just before we, excuse me, back on February 3rd, we had, February 13th, we presented an update about this and to discuss what council wanted to do as far as primarily about the Richmond Avenue Road Diet extension shown here. Since that would take local funds, with the understanding from VDOT that all of the single lane roundabout would be funded by VDOT as they thought they had found additional funds from the 2.25 million initially awarded with the smart scale project. Just before the second meeting in February, we were gonna present, we heard that there was a question about that. So we deferred until we got more information to ask you to make any kind of decision. And so the update, which we just received, as Leslie mentioned at the end of last week, is, I already mentioned, there was an updated estimate for the single lane roundabout. Again, that's the roundabout only. Seven point eight million dollars. And the funding from VDOT, there's still the 2.25 million of smart scale funding as initially awarded. But they've confirmed that the additional funding would only be that they could, that VDOT could provide through this right now is 1.15 million. So of course, do the math. The total funding they would provide for the roundabout would be 3.4 million dollars. And that leaves, of course, a 4.4 million dollar shortfall. That's based on the cost estimates they have on the single lane roundabout as presented and that they've gotten to design so far. So if we're to proceed with the roundabout, obviously, we need to figure out, hey, how we're gonna come up with funding for the 4.4 million dollars. As I mentioned, the VDOT, the 2.25 and 1.15 additional funding is already there. Another opportunity that they suggested we look into would be revenue sharing. So that's a annual program that they have. It actually funds a portion of a project, depending on the type of scope and also different variables that can change some from year to year determines exactly how much of a project that they would, that they would fund, be a maximum of fifty percent or of a full match that VDOT could pay for fifty percent of the project. However, based on recent years, they provided just a rough estimate at this point of what they think it would be. And so of that 4.4 million, if we were to get the revenue sharing for it, that would be 1.54 million, which would still leave the city with 2.86 or just under 3 million dollars to proceed with the single lane roundabout as currently in early design. Obviously, a logical question would be, well, if we need to come up with 3 million dollars, we want to do that? If not, or if we want to consider something else, what about alternatives to a roundabout? So there's, again, there's still the 3.4 million dollars currently available, the VDOT funding for for the Richmond Avenue. I'll still refer to it as a roundabout and road diet project, because that's all we've called it so far. You know, that could be the scope of that changed from a roundabout to more conventional intersection with a traffic signal improved from its current state. And something to consider is conceivably competing constraints, possibly competing constraints, would be ensuring that it has adequate pedestrian accessibility. And this would be to ensure that it does meet the pedestrian needs. We know there's issues with folks at the villages and other folks hereby wanting to cross Greenville Avenue and Richmond Avenue to get downtown or across to rides or various places. And so we want to make sure that that's safe. Certainly, the traffic flow, the level of service of the traffic at this intersection, as well as in conjunction with the intersection at Commerce Road, just on the other side of the underpass, that that is suitable and adequate. And then also that has proper interface with the Greenville Avenue Road Diet to the south. And a little less of a controlling factor, but there's also the Commerce Road, Lewis Creek, Greenway on the Commerce Road. So you may recall in the fall that VDOT had shown a few alternatives. The second alternative was that single lane roundabout. What they called alternative number one, and I just copied this from their presentation they had done back in the fall, was again, more conventional intersection. I show this just to kind of as a reminder, this is what they showed, not as, not as an endorsement of it. We had some concerns about particularly the stacking on the left turn lane onto Richmond Avenue. This is a little more developed version of that they had at the time. I don't know that we, that they showed that in the meeting. But you know, kind of make accommodation for some with, for, makes accommodations for the pedestrian crossings. But again, there's still the concern about the level of service for traffic there and stacking lengths and such. But it's, again, that's kind of rehashing what they had shown before. That was just a conceptual design, I think initially prepared, just when they realized of the major overage of the original scope, they're trying to show here's something that would be, that would be less costly. So ultimately, that brings us tonight to the presentation of what what comes next? What is our decision point? Do we proceed with the roundabout? For VDOT to continue with the single lane roundabout design is, because we'd been planning all along, but unfortunately just found out that the funding that we've been told was there is not available from a different funding stream that VDOT thought was available. If so, you know, where's the additional money gonna come from? And and we would, you know, reasonably go ahead and apply for the revenue sharing if we wanted to proceed with that. But even still, be prepared to identify the, where in our budget or you know, if some other source, if possible, I don't know what that would be, but within our budget to come up with the 2.86 million that we needed. And I went ahead and put on there because it had been, we had talked about it back in February. We want to look at providing additional funding for the revised road diet going up Richmond Avenue. So that would, that could also be on the table. So that's if we were to pursue the roundabout. If we didn't pursue the roundabout, we would still need to do something here because we have, the Greenville Avenue Road Diet is still proceeding and that's, they're not having the same budget concerns with that that with, they have with this project. And so we would need to look at pursuing the design of a less costly intersection. In other words, not a roundabout. And so we would need to direct VDOT to say, well, let's change your design. And of course, the question would be, well, what's that gonna look like? And so they would, or their consultant would provide a concept design of what that intersection might look like that again, it would need to still meet those three constraints of pedestrian accessibility and crosswalks, as well as the road diet interface and certainly the traffic. So in, that would be less costly than the roundabout, but exactly what that would look like. So at this point, I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Yeah, I don't know where to start with this, but I guess it's kind of, it's felt, it's just been this back and forth and you know, it's very yeah, it's frustrating, obviously very frustrating for you, Mr. Hart. And you know, it's what is, what is VDOT willing to do as far as, as work, as far as contribution toward toward that intersection? It just appears to me that the roundabout is just, we thought it was gonna happen, that it was gonna be paid for and now there's not enough. And I don't see how we could come up with what, 2.8, 2.7 million or at, you know, at all. If they were, are they saying they have 1.54 million to make improvements? I mean, are they giving a budget? And saying, we have this much? What can you do with it? Or are they looking at a project and then, and then putting a cost to it? Just because it's gone back and forth so many times, it's
Understood, and I appreciate
I just wonder, yeah.
Your acknowledgement of my frustration as well.
Yeah, sure.
I think what happened with VDOT, again, the 2.25 million was what was originally awarded on smart scale. That's there. And in previous months, at the end of 2024, they looked at how, where can we find some other sources? And they thought they had from a separate funding stream, I suppose, within VDOT. I don't know if it was related to maybe federal money coming down or, I don't know all the details of that. But they thought they had, as they had told us, hey, we have found the additional five plus million to fund the entire thing. Of that, things changed, I think, out of certainly the Stanton District's control of VDOT to, and they said, we only have the 1.15 million. So we do have the 3.4 million for the Richmond Avenue project.
So, so just thinking, I'm sorry. So just thinking if you were to be inclined to make a recommendation about this design, just to make, just to make this design
The roundabout.
One without a roundabout, make it, just to make it a safer intersection, increase the walkability, decrease the backup, the three things that you said. Do you think that that would require, and it's hard to say, city funding? And then if it did require city funding, would it be in our sidewalk fund by any chance or street fund or would that be somewhere in our budget?
So the the intersection that they showed back in the fall, at that time,
Yeah.
they had identified an estimate of 2.9 million for that, which is still less than the 3.4 they're saying is available now. So that, and that includes, you know, traffic signal. Basically redoing the entire intersection. So it would be, I would, I would think even a modified, you know, if you have a lane moved over, an additional lane, you're still kind of disrupting the same footprint, more or less. It would be a different scope. I'm I would like to think particularly with the additional half a million from the 2.5, 3.4, we can find some way to do that. Again, it's gonna be tricky because it's tight there with the underpass, with the other intersection close by. You know, I'm kind of speculating if we can find a way to find a second left turn lane there onto Richmond Avenue. And then that, obviously, you'd have to have two eastbound lanes to receive that on Richmond Avenue currently are. Again, those constraints. The more you allow for more traffic, you might have to might have to shorten where that bike lane begins on the, on the west side of Greenville Avenue heading south. Maybe, you know, moving that back to Garber. Again, this is speculating and, but that would, those would be some ideas if we wanted to do that, to give back to them and say, can you make this, can you make this work for less is basically what we're doing.
This is frustrating, I think is the right word. And I know you're just the messenger in this and you don't work with VDOT on that, but it's, we've been talking about a roundabout here since 2016. And it's been a ride as we hear the internal deliberations and the changes in funding and all of that. And personally, I'd like to unsubscribe from VDOT's feed on that one. On that, because it's a roundabout sounded like a great idea. You know, overall, the two-lane one made a lot of sense to me. It would have been a great gateway to Stanton, but I just see it as an unfunded project. And for them to talk about taking the roundabout out of the roundabout project again, it's, yeah. The intersection itself to me has never seemed like a problem area. And we're not talking about two dirt roads meeting with blinking yellow light. It's, we currently have two lanes going on Richmond Avenue. We have two lanes going the other way. And we're talking about reducing that in a further compromised situation, but also finding money to further compromise the intersection on that. And the idea of the roundabout was traffic never faces itself like opposing forces on that and makes that safer. But it looks like we're losing that on that. So is there any benefit to just saying, oh, well, it's not funded right now? Is there any possibility of being able to use these funds in another area in the city? That always seems strangely arbitrary. There are a number of intersections that could use improvements, could use walkway improvements. We could use more pedestrian signals downtown. A lot of places, you have to guess. And then you're suddenly skittering. So I just, I would be interested to know if, why does it have to be now? I mean, if this has been so compromised in so many separate steps, why do we feel we have to move forward with this? I mean, we have so many other, as we've seen in the budget, restraints and difficulties. We don't know what order of magnitude the issues with war for going to be. We don't have pots of money sitting anywhere that we can just do these things. Is there any chance of being able to use this somewhere else? Hope for a new funding cycle. Move forward with an uncompromised traffic circle at a later time.
I don't think if we could take the money to set aside for the Richmond Avenue project, I don't think that could be taken somewhere else. VDOT is not inclined that. In fact, we even asked, because we thought, hey, this is a question that might come up. Could we use other, other VDOT project funds that we're doing to even try and make up that 4.4 million? And we're told, no, they're either because of different types of funding sources or whatever that basically it was, what has already been designated for the funding for the, for the projects we currently have needs to stay with that. So I'm not sure. I don't know how we could move that 3.4 million or even the 2.25 million somewhere else, because that was designated through the smart scale, the 2.25 was designated through the smart scale program for this.
The other thing to consider is you have a Greenville project and eventually a Commerce, and they have to coordinate somehow. So you have to spend some money on this intersection somehow, some way. And that's what Lyle was trying to explain is that they, even if it's not a roundabout, something has to happen in an intersection to accommodate the road diet coming from one side and something coming from the other side. So you couldn't necessarily leave it alone, just leave it
So you couldn't necessarily leave it alone, just leave it the way it is for that reason. But I, I, I hear, we are, I'm frustrated too, and this has been something Lyle and I have been living and breathing since November. And we keep coming back to you with worse and worse news. We understand, we understand that. So this is where we're at right now, and I, I don't think VDOT is going to concede anymore. I think this is kind of, I called it the final offer.
As Boe regard and Lyle, could we use all of the money without putting in any money from the city to go ahead and enhance that product, do the alternate alternate intersection there without us spending any money in that project? If they would take the whole 3.4 million and do that, and then connect it with the Greenville and Commerce Road, would that be feasible instead of trying to ask them to, if we can put it somewhere else, which is no, but in, instead of giving it back? Because we, we're not trying to give back any money. We want to use that and the roundabout seems like it's not happening at all. So would that be possible to take all of the money that they are offering us and go ahead and do the alternative intersection and leave it at that?
I'd like to think so, again, based on the footprint of, of what was reconfigured that they showed you in the cost estimate for the 2.9 million for that. We, I, I don't, I don't know for sure yet because we haven't asked them to proceed with any alternative design because that's where they began the roundabout. But I think we could, if that's what council wanted to do, we could say, okay, we need to stay within the constraints of, of the, of the available VDOT funds.
Yeah, I think this is definitely like wants versus needs. When I first came on the roundabout, I mean, the idea was beautiful, and I know you've spent so much time on it, and I appreciate that so much, but I just, we have so many other priorities, I think, and I would rather just take the 3.4 million because it does need to be, the intersection does need walkability. And my students trying to walk to Wright's from Stewart Hall, I mean, it's just a really, it gets really sketchy right there. So I would appreciate it to be more pedestrian friendly. But I definitely, if, if we have this much money and we can make it happen for, for that, then I would say we just stay in our little budget and go, go forward.
Counselor Shepard, were you going to add something?
I would echo exactly what Counselor Woods and Park said about not going around in a circle and just we improve the intersection, increase the walkability and bikeability and make it a safer intersection and move forward.
Is it certain that the alternative intersection would be less costly than the single lane roundabout?
Yes, I, I think that's a in a, based on, based on their estimate they provided for the the conventional intersection, signalized intersection I showed earlier. That's, you know, I have no reason to think that would change that significantly.
What it sounds like is not certain is that the available VDOT monies would cover that alternative intersection. But I guess we don't know until they proceed with the design, which is part of that item in your last slide there that says the next step. If we want to try the alternative intersection design is to ask them to fine tune a, a, a design and, and come up with a corresponding cost.
Right, or even just begin with a, a, a concept to, to get us in the ballpark. An estimate, because to this point, they've been moving along with the design of the single lane roundabout. And so that's, that's the direction they've been going. So if, if we're going to have a good, a different direction, we want to let them know.
Definitely. The cost of waiting is definitely more than the cost of moving forward. We see that things just get more expensive every time we come back with something. So, so Mr. Hart, I think you're hearing a consensus here that we'd like to ask VDOT to create a safe intersection within their budget. The 3.4 that, that they had anticipated spending originally.
Thank you. Is there, is there anything we need?
I think that's, Mr. Blair, do we need them to do a motion or anything, or is that, okay? I think we have our instructions.
Thank you so much for your work on this project.
Thank you. We want to, we want to have good relationships with our, with our VDOT partners and you're doing a great job. Thank you so much.
Righty, that wasn't our last item, our last item, no, second to last item matters from the city manager. It's Beauregard. Do you have anything to share with us this evening?
Sure, I just have a couple of things to mention. On April 15th, 16th, and 17th, the Virginia 250 Mobile Museum will be at the Frontier Culture Museum. The museum is free and open to the public to attend. And this is an interactive experience that allows visitors to engage with Virginia's rich revolutionary history. The important point I want to make is they, they are in need of volunteers to help staff the museum. And this is a good, this is a good opportunity, if you're a history lover, to engage with the community as far as getting involved with the 250th preparations. And if you're interested in volunteering, you can talk to me after this meeting. Or if you know how to reach out to Samantha Johnson, our Director of Tourism, you can reach out to her. And then next weekend, April 5th and 6th, at the Stanton Augusta Arts Center Main Galleries on New Street, they will host a pop-up exhibit from JMU Architecture Students, sharing their visions for reimagining the wharf. This is a very current conversation. So this takes on extra significance as the city considers the future of the wharf.
Repeat that date, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, April 5th and 6th, next Saturday and Sunday. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to matters from the public. This part of the city council's agenda is entitled Matters From the Public. It is a time that city council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. A copy of the Stanton City Council's Matters From the Public rules are available in paper form at the clerk's desk and online on the City of Stanton's website. You are asked to familiarize yourself with those rules before commenting. Please come to the podium and be, or begin your call, identify yourself and complete your remarks within five minutes. As a reminder, this is a time for city council to listen. If you would like an answer to a question or a follow-up to your comment, please speak with the city manager, Leslie Beauregard, after the meeting. Would anybody like to speak for matters of the public? Please come to the podium and raise your hand on Zoom if you'd like to participate.
So this is the first time I've been here this year. But Dr. Mary Miller, 471 Albemarle Avenue. But I want to thank you all and for Jeff and Adam for giving your time and energy for the betterment of Stanton. I know this is a timely contribution that you give to us. I respect you all for your integrity, your knowledge, and your diligence. There are some, some things that I try to keep in mind. Empathy, experiencing the thoughts and feelings of others, looking from their eyes to see, to think, and to feel as they do. Compassion, the sympathetic consciousness, consciousness of the distress of others with a desire to alleviate it. Kindness, treating all life with respect and caring. Mercy, especially for those who are scared, as many are at this time. Having had patients from 32 different countries in my solo medical practice, the undocumented are foremost in my mind. Most are good neighbors. They follow the law and they pay taxes. They love their families and many have children. But they have no way to protect themselves and they are scared. After retiring from Connecticut, I lived in Aiken, South Carolina for four years. I'm a lifetime member of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People and was on the Board of Trustees for the Universalist Unitarian Church for two years. The principles of the UU Church continue to be relevant to me. They are, one, the inherent worth and dignity of every person, just as we heard from Dr. Juan. Justice, equity, and compassion in human relations. Acceptance of one another. And encouragement of spiritual growth. A free and responsible shirt, search, search for truth and meaning. The right of conscience and the use of the democratic process in society. The goal of world community with peace, liberty, and justice for all. And respect for the interdependent web of all existence, of which we are a part. As many of you know, I was isolated at a farm at seven and told, you are not like us, you are not one of us. Today, as we see and hear the news, millions of others are told the same. And remember, innocence is not an exemption from hate, rejection, or deportation. Maya Angelou said, without courage, you cannot practice any other value consistently. So I asked myself, what are the values for which I am willing to stand up, speak out, and be counted? And I ask, what is your plan? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Mr. Kessker, does anyone have their hand raised?
No, ma'am, we have no hands raised.
Does anyone else like to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, good evening.
Hi, my name is Anne Center. I live at 1810 Spring Hill Road. My, we live, my husband and I live in an area of Spring Hill Road that have very, very long driveways with multiple homes on them. And I'd like to talk about the trash can program that has just started. Our driveway, we share with two other homes, and it's about an eighth of a mile long uphill to get to our home from Spring Hill Road. And it's very difficult for us to have to put, we would have to put one of these cans into our vehicle and drive it down to Spring Hill Road with our garbage every week. And so it's, I just, there's just no way we can do it. So I called Public Works and asked them if there were any alternatives. And he said, well, you could build a shelter for your can at the end of the road. Well, that's not an option for us because our driveway is an easement on a private road. Also, there's mailboxes that line Spring Hill Road where you could not put a shelter, even if we wanted to. So then they said, well, your other alternative is to apply for special assistance. And so I said, well, what is that? And they said, well, somebody would come to your home and take your can down for you. And so the city would pay for somebody to come do that once a week for me. And they said, uh huh. And so they sent me this form. And then on the form, it says that I need to go to the doctor, make a doctor's appointment and get a note saying that we, you know, we need assistance, so we'd have to pay for a doctor's appointment. Anyway, we've just been very frustrated by this. My neighbors also are very frustrated by this. We just feel like we can't participate in the program and that we'll have to take our garbage to the landfill. But then we'll still have to pay for the program anyway. So I don't know, we just don't know what else to do. We used to just put two bags of garbage down at our mailboxes every week, and that seemed to be work, work out fine. So I don't know if any of the residences can be given other options to maybe continue doing that, because I don't, we're just really frustrated. We don't know what else to do. So I just wanted to comment on that and thank you for listening. So I don't. Anyway, thank you.
Yes, I appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody with their hand raised, Mr. Kessker?
No, ma'am, we have no hands raised.
Would anyone else like to speak this evening? Well, then, going once, the city, the meeting of the Stanton City Council is now adjourned.